Okay, we're live. Sergeants, will you begin your recordings?
Audio to the computer rolling.
Cloud is up.
Backup is rolling and the stream looks good.
We may begin opening.
Thank you. Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council remote hearing on a Committee on Aging jointly with a Subcommittee on Senior Centers and Food Insecurity. At this time, all panelists, please turn on your videos. I repeat, all panelists, please turn on your videos. Thank you. To minimize disruption, please place all electronic devices to vibrate or silent mode. If you wish to submit testimony, you may do so at testimony@council.nyc.gov. I repeat, testimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you for your cooperation, Chair. We are ready to begin.
Good morning. My name is Crystal Hudson and I'm the Chair of the Committee on Aging. I'd like to thank my co-chair, Councilmember Darlene Mealy, as well as the committee members from both the Aging Committee and the Subcommittee on Senior Centers and Food Insecurity for coming together to hold the first hearing of this session. Today, the committees will conduct a hearing on home-delivered meals and the recovery meal service. As Chair of the Aging Committee, my goal is to create systems that work for people, not against them. As the only child of a single mother, I became her primary caregiver once she started exhibiting symptoms of what was later diagnosed as Alzheimer's disease. I experienced firsthand how difficult it was to navigate complex bureaucratic systems and access the resources and services needed to ensure my mother could age safely at home and with dignity. My experience mirrored that of thousands of New Yorkers and their caregivers, the vast majority of whom want to stay in their home when they age. Programs like Home Delivered Meals ensure that older adults can continue to safely remain in their homes and age with dignity. The goal of our hearing today is to address the future of Department for the Aging's Home Delivered Meals program, as well as the ending of the Recovery Meals program. As this pandemic continues, many at-risk New Yorkers are facing a considerable amount of hardship. Recognizing the many needs that my community faced during the pandemic, I tried to do my part by forming my neighborhood mutual aid organization, Greater Prospectites Mutual Aid, aka GPHMA, in April 2020. GPHMA works to meet the needs of my neighbors and prospectites, especially older adults and those with underlying health conditions, on issues including food access, economic relief, and COVID-related resources. This support network canvassed the community to ensure it reached those who couldn't access help online or through other means. Our work revealed the difficulties many older adults faced in accessing basic needs like food and medicine even after the city began operating food assistance programs during the pandemic. I'm proud of the work that GPHMA has done and I hope to apply those same principles to city government. It's clear from GPHMA and the widespread creation of local mutual aid groups across the city that the city does not reach some of its most vulnerable through existing programming and we must ensure all who need food can access it. City Harvest, the city's largest food rescue organization, estimated one and a half million New Yorkers were food insecure last fall, an increase of nearly forty percent over pre-pandemic levels. A lifeline for these individuals has been DIFTA's longstanding congregate meals, home-delivered meals programs, and the several emergency food delivery programs that the city established in the early days of the pandemic under the umbrella of Get Food NYC. In a September 2021 aging hearing, DIFTA testified that as many as 10,000 seniors were being transitioned from Get Food NYC to a new temporary program called Recovery Meal Service funded through DIFTA. This program is set to expire on June 30th of this year. Today, the committee would like to explore the current state of DIFTA's Home Delivered Meals program and whether it is serving all of those who are eligible. We would also like to understand DIFTA's plans for those who remain in the Recovery Meals program and are not connected to more permanent services. We must ensure no seniors fall through the cracks and lack access to essential food resources once the Recovery Meals program ends. Thank you to the advocates and members of the public who are joining us today. I look forward to getting to know you better and working with you to fight for the rights of older adults. Thank you to representatives from the administration for joining us and I look forward to hearing from you on these critical issues. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues who are here today, Councilmembers Schulman, Lee, Marte, Dinowitz, and Brandon. I'd also like to thank my staff, Casey Addison and Andrew Wright, and Aging Committee staff, Crystal Pond, Vera Mieke, Dohini Sempora, and Daniel Krup. I will now turn it over to my co-chair for this hearing, Councilmember Darlene Mealy.
I think Darlene Mealy is having some technical issues now, but she'll join us a little later. So I think we're going to get started with the administration's testimony and hopefully she can jump on when she has the opportunity.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Crystal Pond, Assistant Deputy Director to the Human Services Division, which oversees the Aging Committee and the Subcommittee on Senior Centers and Food Insecurity. Before we begin today, I want to remind everyone that you will be on mute until you are called on to testify, at which point you will be unmuted by a member of our staff. Members of the administration who are testifying will not be muted during the question and answer portion of administration testimony. I will be calling on public witnesses to testify after the conclusion of the administration's testimony and council member questions, so please listen for your name to be called. All hearing participants should submit written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov if you have not done so already. The deadline for submitting written testimony for the record is 72 hours after the hearing. I will now call on the following members of the administration to testify. Lorraine Cortez Vasquez, Commissioner of the Department for the Aging, Luella Byers, DIFTA's Assistant Commissioner for the Bureau of Community Services, Michael Onyivene, DIFTA's Chief Operating Officer. Before we begin testimony, I will administer the oath to all members of the administration who will be offering testimony or who will be available for questions. Please raise your hand and I will read the oath and call on you individually for a response. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and respond honestly to council member questions? Commissioner Cortez Vasquez.
I do.
Assistant Commissioner Byers. Sorry, Assistant Commissioner Byers.
I did.
Okay, great. And Chief Operating Officer Onyivene.
Michael.
Yeah, sorry, Michael's muted.
Yes, I do.
Great. So, thank you, Commissioner Cortez Vasquez. You may begin your testimony.
Thank you so much. Good morning. Good morning, Chairwoman, Chairperson Hudson, members of the Committee on Aging and the Subcommittee on Senior Centers and Food Insecurity. I want to ask the council to consider calling that the Center for Older Adults, the Subcommittee on Centers for Older Adults and Food Insecurity. I'm Lorraine Colte Vasquez, Commissioner of the New York City Department for the Aging. I want to congratulate all of you on your new roles. This is an exciting time for the council and for the city. I look forward to working with you and we enjoyed a very strong productive relationship with the Committee on Aging in the past and yielded lots of results. And I look forward to having the same experience with you as we move forward. I'm joined today by Luella Byers, who's the Assistant Commissioner for the Bureau of Community Services. Many of you have heard, the Bureau of the Community Services is what I call is the heart of the Department for the Aging as it is responsible for home-delivered meals, congregate meals, NORCS, naturally occurring regional communities, as well as some health and art programs. And so it is responsible for the lion's share of the services that everyone knows in the city as aging services. I'm also joined by Michael Ogden Benni, DIFTA's Chief Operating Officer and First Deputy. I'm happy to discuss the topic of home-delivered meals and the 60-plus recovery meal, the transitional service with you today. As you know, DIFTA works to eliminate ages and something that I hope we can all join forces to do. It is one of the last human rights indignations that still exist that needs to be challenged. We want to ensure the dignity and quality of life of New York's diverse older adult population and to support their caregivers through service, advocacy, and education. DIFTA is deeply committed to assisting older adults so that they may age safely in their homes and remain actively engaged in their lives and their communities, the same communities that they helped nourish and develop. DIFTA's priorities became more critical during the COVID public health crisis, which we celebrate. I don't know if "celebrate" is the word that I want to use, which we commemorate its second year of existence today. As such, maintaining vital engagement of tens of thousands of older adult center members and securing uninterrupted access to critical services, including meals for older homebound individuals and for those who are in congregate services. And I would be remiss if I would say that when I say continued critical services, that included an incredible robust opportunity that the pandemic presented with us, which was vital, which was virtual programming. When we started at the pandemic, we had nineteen programs who provided virtual services and today, every older adult center and service provides some form of vital services, which has just increased the ability to provide services during this pandemic. The provision of a meal to a homebound older adult helps them ensure their nutritional needs are met, but more, it promotes overall health and the ability to live independently, as you so well stated in your opening remarks, Councilmember Hudson. Through the network of fifteen dedicated home-delivered meals provider, DIFTA delivered nearly 4.3 million meals to homebound adults in the last full fiscal year 2021. I want you all to be aware that when we started this pandemic and we were looking at food insecurity in the city, it was imperative that, and the Department for the Aging was quite serious about ensuring that home-delivered meals were not interrupted. You know, that if we developed any other alternative services for meals, that we not interrupt the services for the most vulnerable. And I must say that we were very successful in making sure that home-delivered meals were not interrupted during the pandemic unless there was, you know, a shortage of drivers due to people falling ill of the COVID vaccine themselves. But that the service itself continued uninterrupted and that we have to give credit to our network of providers who did an exceptional job. Unlike older adults who participate in the daily congregate meal service at older adult center, any older adult receiving a home-delivered meal service must first meet one of the following criteria set by the New York State Office for the Aging and have to be determined eligible by DIFTA's Case Management Agency. The eligibility includes being unable to attend the congregate meal program because of an accident, illness, or frailty. Lack of formal or informal supports who can regularly provide meals for the individual. Able to live safely at their home if meals are provided. And/or unable to prepare meals due to one of the more, one of the following reasons: lack of adequate cooking facilities, the lack of knowledge or the skill to prepare a meal, or the inability to safely prepare meals, shop, or cook. And that's the eligibility criteria. The Home Delivered Meal Program is directly connected to the Department for the Aging's Case Management Program. The case management agencies perform in-depth assessments of social, psychological, cognitive, and physical well-being to assist clients live independently. That is the goal, to live independently in the community. That is what has been the goal for aging services in the city of New York, which is aligned with our community care plan. This is also a pillar of the community care model which allows older adults to positively age in place and live with dignity. Following an RFP, a request for proposal in 2020, new contracts for home-delivered meals programs started January 2021. One of the goals of the program was designed to increase the diversity of meal choices. We had done a previous survey of older adults of how the program could be improved or to get their feedback prior to the RFP release and one of the things that they overwhelmingly stated was older adults wanted choice, choice in their foods rather than having a particular food pattern repeated over and over again. Allowing individuals to choose the type of meal they receive also allows control over when they can eat a meal, regardless of when it is delivered. Since contracts started in January of last year, we've seen a doubling now, twenty-seven percent in the number of frozen meals served. Chilled meals were also added to the choice this year to date. One hundred and two, one hundred and two thousand three hundred eighty-four have been served. We're happy to see a positive response to a wider variety of options for older adults. We are thankful for the city's investment to increase the reimbursement rate for home-delivered meals. As of January 1st, 2022, meal rates are now $10.68 and will raise the rate further to $11.78 beginning in the fiscal year of 2023. That rate increase was possible only because of the partnership with the city council and the advocacy of our network of home-delivered meals providers. And I have cited them and applauded them for those efforts. However, we are seeing an increasing need for meals within the system that is near capacity. Historically, home-delivered meals roughly enrolls eight hundred new clients each year. Difter is projecting that once recovery meals are discontinued and as we have the experience of the pandemic, we will see approximately 3,000 of the recipients of those meals will be found eligible to enroll in home-delivered meals. We have seen that traditionally it's 900 a year. During the pandemic, we found that the number was going to creep up to about 1,500 a year as the natural new number. And now because of recovery meals and in preliminary conversations, we're estimating about 3,000 of the recipients will be found eligible. In addition to home-delivered meals, older adults have access to healthy nutritious meals at older adult centers across the city. At the start of the pandemic, Difter quickly transitioned our congregate meals programs to an operation to ensure that seniors, that centers could continue to have access to a daily meal through their normal channels. The meal service shifted immediately to a grab-and-go model. This was done within one week's time and 300 odd network providers, senior centers responded phenomenally. And then it was centralized when the demand started growing. It was centralized to a direct delivery system, Difter Direct. Eventually, that program exceeded Difter's capacity and it eventually merged with the city's broader emergency food initiative called Get Food NYC. In June 2021, our older adult centers were approved to reopen following the Department of Health and Mental Health Guidance for in-person gathering, including reduced-capacity congregate and grab-and-go meals. We appreciate the work that the network has done to ensure that we were able to open safely and in compliance with public health guidance. And as you can imagine, the openings have been slow and then we've also seen a decrease because of Omniprom. And so it's not been a steady pace and seniors, older adult clubs are not operating as we have historically known them pre-pandemic. And I don't know when we can expect to see that projection again. Since older adults began the reopening process in June of 2021, over 2.3 million congregate and grab-and-go meals have been served at older adult centers. Through the reopening, older adults gain community-based access to meals and return to their in-person social interaction and programming at some limited basis given the guidance offered by the, done in partnership with the Department of Health. And also, again, I'll mention the invaluable and importance of virtual programming. As stated previously, in May of 2020, Get Food NYC was established to address food insecurity for all New Yorkers during this pandemic. At the time, Difter transitioned about 44,000 older adults to the Get Food program from Difter's direct, what was it, what was it called? Difter Direct Meals, the first transition program. In the fall of 2021, coinciding with the phasing out of Get Food NYC, Difter designed a temporary recovery program for those recipients of Get Food that were 60-plus and that were still active as of the October transition point. The 60-plus Recovery Meal Service will operate till the end of the current fiscal year, which is June 30th, 2022, as the council chair has indicated. As we prepare for a transition, a survey was completed through Difter providers to ascertain whether Get Food recipients known to Difter, one would return to older adult centers for either grab-and-go or congregate meals or to be assessed by case management to determine eligibility for home-delivered meals or transition to receive recovery meals. We did all of that with, at the onset of recovery meals. Difter and the Housing Recovery Office, HRO, then devised a second survey to older adults not known to Difter. The survey was completed at the end of November and over 13,000 older adults were then referred to recovery meals. During the transition month of November, Get Food NYC overlapped delivery with the new recovery meals to avoid any missed meals during this transition period. During the last week of October, a week before the start of the recovery meals, Difter launched a customer information call center to respond to any of the calls, concerns that clients may have regarding the recovery meals, seeing that it was a new set of providers delivering those meals. Again, Recovery Meals is a short-term emergency service that was created exclusively to support the Get Food participants who are over the age of 60, who are still receiving emergency meal deliveries when Get Food ended in October 2021. When Recovery Meal Service first started, we were at a peak of 13,000 weekly participants. Last week, the number of weekly participants fell roughly to 11,700. I must say that one of the reasons, in addition to the beginning of the call center to address any of the concerns clients they have, the way we designed the program was that three network program participants would be the primary contractors for recovery meals. That was very important for us, to have three experienced home-delivered meals programs who had experience not only with older adults, familiarity with the way the service is done and the kind of attention that is required for clients. And we're really proud that that has worked seamlessly to date. As we approach the end of recovery meals in June, Difter will work to ensure that older adults with needs of meals have access to meals. First, we launched an education campaign and we are continuing to look at, expanded that educational campaign with our three providers and will continue to remind older adults that the program will end. So it's a two-pronged approach. First is a reminder that the program, so that there is no shock on June 30th. So you need to remind people constantly, if you remind people at least five times, they will hear it and recall it. The other thing is to educate them about what the options are that are available. It could be going to a senior center and looking at food pantries and other options available to them. And we're continuously working with the City Hall on what some of those options may be. And then the first, and then the other one is that the the other option is to make sure that we, once we give them this information and ask them for some basic questions, the home-delivered meals providers will deliver those in the meals and then will also pick them up so that we could make sure that we have responses to the questions asked. The first notification via postcard went out on Monday. Later this month, as I said, we'll conduct the survey with recipients in partnership with our three providers as we will continue to move forward. The call center reminds callers on all incoming calls of the pending service end date and will make outgoing calls to participants in the coming months. As part of this contract, we will remind older adults about the other options, grab-and-go. As part of this contract, we will remind older adults about other services that they can avail themselves. Additionally, we will provide information on the case management area, management agencies in their areas. And if they're interested, we can make sure that a needs assessment is done to determine if they're home-delivered meals eligible. We understand that food insecurity is a citywide issue. We continue to have conversations with the Mayor's Office on Food Policy, the Office of Emergency Management regarding meal options once this program sunsets. We know that access to meals is a fundamental component of not only just stability and health, but also independence and aging in place. In fact, it was the genesis, the original premise for the Older Americans Act. We are also incredibly grateful for the ongoing support of the city council, which in FY22 awarded Difter with over $46.3 million in discretionary funding, allowing us to make even greater investments in often underserved and unserved communities. I urge you to continue to allocate these funds for aging services so that we can continue to diversify and expand services to older adults. Ensuring older adults have access to meals is the foundation for the work of the department. And we are happy to continue to expand this core service. I am proud to say that in the last RFP, we were able to transition eleven programs from discretionary funds, as we made a commitment to previous council members, that we would take ethnic and local-based community programs that received discretionary funding, transition those to city city tax levy funds and we were able to do so with eleven of those programs for a total of $2.9 million. Again, we hope that that baseline is not removed from aging services as a whole. I'm proud of the work that Difter and this aging network has done. I'm extremely proud of the work that they've done, especially during this challenging years of the pandemic and these ever-changing times. They've had to be nimble and fluid. We've had to respond to the science and pivot at any moment, in a moment's time, whether it was capacity questions, whether it was grab-and-go, whether it was masks and a variety of changes that had been imposed on this network that has responded exceptionally. I value the partnership that we've had with our sister agencies over this course of this period of time, you know, Department of Buildings, Emergency Management Services, HRA, and other sister agencies that have made our services possible and not to be interrupted during these challenging times. Older workers and older adults have access to food throughout this pandemic and it is because of these strong partnerships and with that, I conclude this report.
Thank you, Commissioner. I see that we have now been joined by Chair Mealy. So if she has audio, Chair Mealy, would you like to give your opening statement now?
Please exit the plane.
Do you think I could undo it later in the meeting?
Please don't block the door.
Sorry, I think we can. Okay, I think we, I think we lost Chair Mealy. We'll come back to her. So I want to thank you, Commissioner. Before I turn to Chair Hudson for questions, I'd like to remind council members to use the Zoom and raise function to indicate that they have a question for this panel. Please remember to keep your questions and answers to five minutes. Panels from the administration, please stay unmuted if possible during this question and answer period. I also want to note that Chair Mealy I also want to note that Chair Mealy hopefully will resolve her technical issues, so we might interrupt the question and answer period for her to give an opening statement. I will now turn it over to Chair Hudson.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Commissioner. I know that your work and commitment to older adults precedes your time as Commissioner. So I know that when you say you're passionate and committed, that that is in fact true. So thank you for your testimony. My first question, and I know you shared some of these numbers, so forgive me if it's a bit redundant, but I just want to make sure we're able to get everything in on the record. In a September hearing, DIFTA reported there were seven thousand to ten thousand seniors who were not affiliated with an older adult center who would transition into the Recovery Meals program. Do you know how many clients entered the Recovery Meals program in November when it started?
The number that transitioned in November was thirteen thousand. And it is now eleven thousand four hundred.
Okay, great. Thank you. And DIFTA also reported in September that around eight thousand seniors in the Get Food NYC program were associated with older adult centers, and that sixty percent of those seniors or older adults said they wanted to go back to centers. How many of those eight thousand older adults returned to an older adult center? And how many transitioned to the Recovery Meals program?
The, of those that were known to DIFTA, and Michael, make sure that I'm being accurate in these numbers, right? The most recent numbers, two thousand four hundred were transitioned to Recovery Meals. And the balance of those were, went back to senior centers. That is based on a conversation with them, their actual participation at centers that we cannot indicate, you know?
Okay, understood. And so how many clients are currently in the Recovery Meals program?
Eleven thousand four hundred.
Okay. And how many of those are not eligible for DIFTA's Home Delivered Meals program? I know you said you can't identify those that haven't actually connected to.
So what I can tell you is that assessment is what we're going through right now. We're trying to determine of those, how many are. We started that process, and I believe, and Michael, correct me if I'm, or amplify this, I believe that something like three thousand were interviewed, were assessed, were approached, I'm sorry, were approached for home-delivered meals that we had determined could be eligible. A thousand five hundred did not want to participate in an assessment, and therefore, we could not deem them eligible. Michael, you can correct that, but I want to, before you, Michael, before you amplify that and give the correct numbers, or the more accurate numbers. What I would like to say is that to be part of Home Delivered Meals, you have to go through this assessment process. And the people on Recovery Meals have been individuals, older adults, who have lived in New York City independently, not involved in government. So it was not surprising to us that many of them have not said, "We're not going to have you assess me and go through this process." So that is why I said earlier, we wanted to do this educational process to let them know more fully that that is part of the entree to a home-delivered meals program, and repeat that process over and over again so that it could be not so far into them. Michael, you can add any numbers to clarify for Chair.
Yeah, I'll just give a quick summary. In the weeks leading up to the transition to Recovery Meals, the Get Food folks and HRO, the Housing Recovery Office, reached out to the non-DIFTA-known clients, and they did just a very, very light assessment of a couple of questions. That generated thirty-eight hundred names that, on first blush, might be eligible for home-delivered meals. Since then, we have reached out, the folks moved over here, and DIFTA has reached, the case management agencies, reached out to all thirty-eight hundred. They reached twenty-eight hundred, a thousand that they didn't reach. Well, forty-three had moved, deceased, or gone to a nursing home. The thousand that they didn't reach after three phone calls, all got a letter and asked them to please call us. So of the twenty-eight hundred odd that we did reach, as Commissioner mentioned, half were not interested in the assessment. Of those that were assessed, half were determined eligible for home-delivered meals, and that's where we're at in that stage.
Can I just want to make sure, can we just go through those numbers again so I'm clear? Twenty-eight hundred were reached and provided a full assessment, one thousand?
No, 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 no.
Half of those.
Twenty-eight hundred were deemed eligible just by a first blush, you know, for home-delivered meals.
I thought that was thirty-eight hundred. I thought that was the thirty-eight hundred number.
Thirty-eight hundred were deemed, twenty-eight hundred we reached. Of the twenty-eight hundred we reached, half said, "I'm not interested in the assessment."
Okay, thank you. And were you able to get information from, or did you ask them specifically why they were not interested in the assessment? I understand your point, Commissioner, about, you know, people who maybe weren't previously connected to government services. But was that, is that, you know, an estimation, or was that communicated to you?
I don't have that information. But that being said, we are going to go through a process again of doing a survey to those in the Recovery Meal program. So we'll get a better sense of what was the hesitation then. And through this education process, hopefully, they'll have a better sense of what the assessment entails and may be more amenable. So we think that both the communication, pre-education process may give us information on that.
And do you have a delivery date for results of that program or that assessment?
We have a timeline for that. Michael, we have a timeline for when we are starting the card, the first card went out Monday. The first card reminding people that the program is sunsetting and that they have other options. And we're right now working with our three partners to come up with the second round of cards that will also include some survey information as well as an educational statement. You know, what is a congregate meal? Where is this? Where can you go for your senior center? What is an assessment process? Some of that basic information that they might not be familiar with.
Okay, so what's the end date for when you expect to have all of the information back and collected in a full idea of how many folks, you know, we're talking about?
I can't give you a definite end date, but we know that we want this completed in advance of June 30th so that we can look at what some options are.
Okay, and are any of your outreach efforts, including, or those of the partners, including, you know, canvassing in person, you know, door knocking, phone calls for the folks who may not either have the capacity to check their mail, or read it, or who miss it? I just want to make sure to reach as many people as possible.
So the gift of this program is that meals are delivered to their homes. And so through our three partners who are responsible for the home delivery, we will make sure that those cards and surveys are delivered with the meal, and we will also make sure that those cards and surveys are picked up and returned to the provider so that canvassing, as we traditionally know it, and door knocking is not necessary because we have access to the eleven thousand four hundred participants because we delivered meals to those individuals weekly or twice a week, whatever the cadence is.
If I may also add, Commissioner and Chair, Commissioner mentioned that twenty-four hundred are known to DIFTA, right? And a number of them were formerly older adult center participants. The older adult center will also join this effort in outreach to them, to remind them that we're open again, we're offering meals, congregate meals, Grab and Go, please come back. In addition to other programs, there are NORC participants in the Recovery Meals, we will outreach to those. That leaves nine thousand that are not known to DIFTA, and that's what the card and survey is going to begin to dig a little bit deeper.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
The other thing that I wanted to clarify in the sense of outreach through the RFP for older adult centers that we've just completed and expanded our services outreach and education was a big part of that RFP. And so we know that, and most older adult centers have been interested in reaching out to some of these individuals who have received Recovery Meals, either those known to them previously, but also to potential new participants.
Okay, and then what's the plan for these folks after June 30th?
We are working very closely with City Hall. We are working very closely with our partners to come up with some strategies that we think would be beneficial and helpful to these individuals. That is still evolving, and we can address that at a later point.
Have there been any conversations about extending the program beyond June 30th?
I think there's been a variety of conversations about that, and I think a lot of that will determine on where we are in terms of the pandemic and the needs and people's ability to move about more than they currently are. And I think the assessment will indicate the scale of the problem that we need to continue to address.
And then can you share who you've been having the conversations with? Is it the Mayor's Office of Food Policy? Is it the mayor himself? Any other agencies?
We work very closely, obviously, with the Mayor's Office. Our deputy mayor is extremely supportive and helpful, and those conversations engage. We also talked to the Mayor's Office on Food Policy, who has been responsible for Get Food, and those conversations continue.
Okay, thank you.
I think.
Eric, I mean, Michael?
Luella is asking if she can be unmuted.
Yes. Luella? Can we unmute Luella? Assistant Commissioner Byers?
Yep.
Thank you. I just wanted to be unmuted.
Ah, okay.
Oh, I see. Is there anything that you want to add, Luella, that we may have not said in terms of outreach? And in terms of the involvement of the network of agencies around continuation and transition for Recovery Meals, clients back into the network?
Yes, I will always see so also reaching out to our clients to have them come back into, whether it's congregate services or just to pick up, grab and go, and also get engaged into our virtual program. We do have a robust virtual program, so the objective is to try to make sure that, you know, all the clients or older adults are aware that they can attend the older adult center for not only meals, but also other services.
Thank you.
Is one of the options that's being explored currently to expand the baseline Home Delivery Meals program in order to ensure there's no waitlist for meals, regardless of the eventual need that's determined?
As I said before, when we did the, during this pandemic, and as we seen more and more people and the frailty of more older adults and the limited capacity of older adults, we did a survey of our current meal providers to determine capacity. And so at this moment, we are at the level of, I don't know what. We have determined that a capacity needs to be expanded. We looked at our providers, our providers have indicated that they do have the capacity to expand. But as we've also said, you know, the home-delivered meals clientele, given the growth in the community, we anticipate that this growth will be on the upward trajectory.
Thank you.
Right now, we do not have a capacity issue. It might be a timing issue, but we don't have a capacity issue at this moment.
Okay, so then this might be a little redundant, but how much funding would be needed to serve home-delivered meals eligible Recovery Meal clients long term?
I think we could address that probably better in the budget discussion because I think what we're doing right now is we are, you know, we've been engaged in conversations with OMB regularly about what we are projecting we need for home-delivered meals. So that's an ongoing conversation. And I think that, I'm not trying to avoid the question, I'm just trying not to mislead. So, you know, it's a conversation that we have, it's one of our new needs, and so it's an ongoing discussion that we're looking at. But it's upwards of, it's more than five million dollars, but it's up in a category above that.
Okay, so just to confirm, you will be asking for more money for Home Delivery Meals program?
We have a new needs request to OMB, and OMB has been extremely responsive and to evaluating that need with us.
Okay. Recognizing that case management is the first step to screening for home-delivered meals and home care, what's the current waiting list for case management?
If, and here we have, Daniel Krup will understand that we have definitional challenge around what's waiting list or what's not waiting list. So actual waiting list, we don't have an actual waiting list. But Daniel has always reminded us, Chair, that the intent of this is to look at where people are in this triage process. So if we look at our triage process, everyone gets assessed. When the minute you come into a case management, you get a preliminary assessment. And if you're determined to have food insecurity, we put you on a program. And by this time, it was Recovery Meals, you get that, or we get you to a home-delivered meals, right? In that process, because the assessment process is more than that initial intake, they may be about anyone, about a thousand four hundred people waiting for a full case management assessment. Daniel, so that's where we always come with, is it an actual waiting list or is it part of a triage process? So there are about a thousand four hundred people in that triage process. But I want to also underscore that everyone's, if food insecurity was a primary need, that need is immediately addressed.
Okay, that's good to know. I would say, you know, anyone who's waiting for some sort of service or program or resource, I would qualify them as being on a waiting list. But I understand that, you know, it's nuanced.
It's nuanced, and it's nuanced, and we're not trying to be difficult or, you know. But it's just, because waiting list, and I have to say, as waiting list for me means you've received no service, or you've been, or there's been no contact. So, and I think that that's where we keep going back and forth. And so therefore, clearly understanding the intent, we will respond to the intent, and I talk about the triage process.
Yeah, I mean, and that's, I don't, I'll just, I'll say, I just differ slightly. You know, my perspective coming into this work is just that government should be providing the services and resources and programs that people, especially those who are most vulnerable, need. And so I appreciate the fact that those who have been identified as food insecure are getting that initial need met, but that's one of many needs. And so as long as the rest of their needs aren't being met, you know, I would make the argument. you know, I would make the argument that there's, you know, they're, they're still struggling and they're still, you know, in need of, of so much more. But I, but I, you know, I, I appreciate the clarification. I have other questions. I also want to make sure my colleagues get to some other questions. And I know, I believe Chair Mealy might want to share her opening statement as well. So can I kick it to you, Crystal? We've got several crystals on the line here, so you all are lucky. You get plenty of crystals to choose from.
This is true. Um, yes, I think Chair Mealy has joined us, but I think that she might be having some audio issues.
Okay.
So.
I just unmuted myself.
Okay, there you go.
Alrighty. I, I must say, good morning to everyone. And welcome to this joint hearing on home delivery meals and the recovery meals program. I am Councilmember Darlene Mealy, Chair of the Subcommittee on Senior Centers and Food Insecurities. I want to thank our Chair of Department of Aging Committee, Crystal Hudson, for this joint hearing today to discuss this important topic. As Chair of this Subcommittee, I want to ensure that older adult centers, also known as senior centers, get the attention and resources that they need. Senior centers are a lifeline to the many older adults. And they are fundamental to much of the DIFTA programs, our portfolios also. During much of this pandemic, when seniors needed support the most, seniors center doors was closed. These centers adapt to the new realities as fast as they could with grab and go meals, virtual programs and wellness calls. While some seniors have returned to the congregate meals offerings at the city centers, as they reopen, many do not feel safe or comfortable during so while we remain in the grips of this pandemic. Nothing compares to social interaction and mental stimulation. With senior centers currently operating at 25% capacity, I worry that our seniors are not getting the services they need. In fiscal year 2021, 7.6 million congregate meals were served. In the first four months of fiscal 2022, that number was 62, 624,000. As COVID numbers are at their lowest since last summer, the city should explore how to expand capacity as senior centers. We need to ensure that older adults are not only receiving the meals that they need to survive, but also social services and support they thrive on. I look forward to elevating senior centers in my role as Chair of this Subcommittee. And I want to thank the administration, advocates, members of the public who have joined us today in this discussion. Meals for Seniors. I would like to thank my staff, Melissa, Melissa Wilson and Subcommittee Staff, Crystal Pond, Vera Marchekin, I can't say that right, and Daniel Krup. I will now turn this over to the moderator. And I want to just congratulate our new Assistant Deputy Director, Crystal Pond, in her new role as that Director. And to go, she's going to go over some peculiar items. And thank you for this hearing.
Thank you, Chair Mealy. Did you want to ask questions at this time as well?
Yes, I do. I'm hearing so much about this list. So I look, I was looking back. During the pandemic, there were, when this Garcia took over the food, the Cozart. It was said that some Department of DIFTA did not share a list to other agencies. Has that changed? Commissioner?
Chair Mealy, with all due respect, Mealy, I'm not sure I know what list you're referring to. We've always had a shared list between the, the Office of Food Policy and the Department for the Aging. And that is how we know how many people were known to DIFTA as, from, who received Get Food. So I'm not quite sure I know exactly what list you're referring to. Forgive my, forgive my lack of information on that. But if I could, if you could give me a little more indication as to what list you mean. We know that at the point when Get Food, when DIFTA transferred its program, which was designed for 25,000 and grew immediately in, in a matter of two weeks to 44,000, those 44,000 individuals were transferred to Get Food. So I'm not, I'm not.
Okay, I wish, this is it. It said in a news article that I read. But they say the process for recognizing who should be getting the deliveries has been needlessly complicated because DIFTA created, created its list without consulting them and has refused to share it. This was in, in the Daily News at one point when Kathleen Garcia took over the food program. So to me, I feel that if we were sharing the food list earlier, more seniors would not have been, would not have fallen through the cracks. So is that still going on today? That list?
I can, I can say to you with full confidence that any list generated by DIFTA and given and shared with the Mayor's Office on Food Policy is gathered from our STAR system, which is our client data management system, which is populated by every one of our service providers. So to the extent that the service provider information is on the STAR system and the client data system, it's to the extent that we have all of the information on clients. And that is the list that is shared with not only the foods are at that time, and it was 44,000 people that were shared. And so all I, that is what I can tell you is the process. That continues to be the process. The source of client data for DIFTA is our STAR system. And that data is inputted by the 308 providers that we have in the network.
So is that the portal? The data portal?
That is, that is our portal. That is our database and it's called STARS. And right now, we are looking at upgrading STARS so that clients could go in there and have some, some ability to update their own information.
Really? Oh, so now has, have that portal changed? Because they said that you did not, people could not find out or DIFTA could not give food to programs or to individuals because it was their address. Have you updated the portal to address that? Put their addresses in it?
Chair Mealy, I'm, I'm going to repeat this just for clarity sake. The portal is called STARS. It's our client data system. The portal is input, that data in that system is inputted by a, a 308 service providers. And the veracity and the accuracy of that information is based on the input by the community of service provider. So that is the, that is what we all rely on. The provider relies on that data. The city relies on that data. And that is how that data is compiled and how that data is then analyzed on a regular basis.
Okay, in December.
Just, and the other thing I want to say is there were, there were one or two unfortunate misleading news reports at the beginning of the pandemic. As you can imagine, this was a very fluid situation. And that was over two years ago. And I would say that we are in a much better place than we were as a city, where we were on March 16th, when we all had to experience a shutting down 300, 280 senior centers and changing them to grab and go and then transitioning to a direct meal program.
My question, I'm so sorry that I can't really get to the majority of things that I want. I have death in my family. But, um, thank you. Thank you so much. Well, I can give questions later on. You, I will turn it over to my Chair, my colleague, Crystal Hudson, to go on. I would do some more questions later in this.
My prayers are with you and your family.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair Mealy. I'm actually going to turn it back over to our moderator, Crystal Pond, who I believe will allow some of our other colleagues to ask a few questions. Thank you and condolences.
Thank you, Chair Hudson and Mealy. We will now turn to questions from other councilmembers. Councilmember Shulman, you may ask your question, followed by Councilmember Lee.
Thank you very much. Thank you. First, I want to thank Chair Hudson for holding this hearing on such an important topic. Chair Mealy, my thoughts and prayers are with you and your family. My deepest condolences to you. And I want to thank you, Commissioner, the Commissioner for your commitment and passion for older adults, of which I'm fast approaching. And so my question is, so during the pandemic, and I was working in the Speaker's office at the time, it, it appeared to me that programs and services really revolved around membership in an older adult center. And I had these issues with the Get Food leadership and all of that. So my question to you is what type of outreach do you have for seniors to join older, older adult centers? That's number one. And number two, in my district, which actually has the highest number of seniors of any city council district, we have Southeast and Pacific Asians, Baharian and Orthodox Jewish members of the Jewish community who have language challenges. So with that outreach, how do you do outreach to those communities that have language challenges?
Great, thank you for the questions. They're great questions. The one thing that I can tell you is outreach is an ongoing basis. If you look at DIFTA services, about 25,000 pre-pandemic numbers, all right? Because those numbers are very different now. Pre-pandemic, we were doing 25,000 meals a day in congregate sites. That's about 25,000 individuals getting meals. About another 7,000 or 8,000 were receiving services, going there for recreational programs. So that's about 30,000 individuals. We know that there's 1.6 million older adults in the city of New York. And so what, what? And we also knew that it was important for people to get information. Chairman Hudson, Chairwoman Hudson said at the beginning of her testimony, the complications and the difficulties to navigate the system and to get familiar with it. And so what we built into this new RFP that we issued for, for older adult centers was outreach. Outreach has always been a continuous process so that any older adult in the city of New York, the only thing you have to have is the requirement of age. You are eligible to receive services as an older adult club. You don't even need to do a neighborhood club. I may decide to go to the one in Manhattan for whatever reasons. It's closer to my daughter or my, or my grandchildren's school. So you, any older adult in the city of New York can go to any older adult club. And so what does, what the, what the centers have done is create, you know, work through their local community partners, churches, synagogues, other community-based organizations to keep spreading the word about the services that they offer. So it's a continuous process. And I believe that, you know, they always are looking for new opportunities and new individuals to serve. As for the religious and ethnic requirements and language requirements, and I'm going to let Luella, she wants to supplement this. She, she may, because she's, she's close to the ground every day. One of the things that I can say is that we provide services in multiple languages. We supply food to meet variety of nutritional, cultural interests, palates and preference, as well as religious needs. The, the, the thing that we are very proud of is that we noticed that there was a underserved pop, lots of underserved populations, which is why we issued the new RFP and the community care plans. And we were able to expand to 31 new sites, most of which were in diverse ethnic communities. Today, 60% of our programs are in tree communities, communities that have been identified as racial and, and communities that have been traditionally underserved. So it is something that we have been very mindful of and we were able to achieve with the expansion of, of the senior, the older adult network with, through this last RFP.
Well, I, I also want to offer that to please utilize the council as well and our, our various district offices to reach out to people in the community. Because I have a lot of seniors who've called me who said, I don't want to be part of a senior center, of an older adult center. I'm not sure why, but I really think it's important for people to know that and then figure out what we're going to do if they don't join. But I wanted to just offer that because we need to expand the outreach.
And then I think, and I think we also need to expand to just amplify what you're saying, Councilwoman, is that we also have to amplify and re-educate people in what your older adult centers are. These are not your, you know, your mother, what is it? What was the saying? This is not your father's Chevrolet. Older adult centers have evolved and emerged. And so what, what, what the context is of what older adults are, you know, it might be, that's a good educational process that we can all engage.
And my, my last question is how much money do you spend on outreach? And do you require more?
My answer to those questions usually is the, the need always outpaces the resources. And right now, I, I, I can get you the number that we put in the RFP for outreach, but every, every program that was built into it. Now, the responder can choose to do that, you know, the actual provider. But, but I can tell you what we had designated for that.
Okay, that would be helpful. Thank you. Thank you. I'm turning it back over to, to a moderator. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Shulman. I'll now turn it over to Councilmember Lee for questions.
I'm unmuted successfully.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Thank you so much, you know, to the Chair, Chair Hudson, as well as Chair Mealy. And again, I want to share condolences to you, Chair Mealy, on your, on the death in your family. I thank you, Commissioner, and all the DIFTA staff for all the amazing work you guys have been doing throughout this pandemic. I know it's been absolutely insane for us to figure out. And I've always been a fan of, you know, not, you know, advocating for more dollars in DIFTA's budget because it is by far too little. And especially now, we have the latest information. As many seniors as we do students in the education system. And so that need is going to just only continue to grow more.
Just for the record, Councilmember Lee, more seniors than.
More seniors.
Can I add to both of you and indulge you? The definers like to be defined as older adults. The define, like to be defined as older adults.
Yes, yes. Yes, yes. I know. I've been trying to switch my language as well.
I know, so do I. So do I.
OACs. Um, so I, um, you know, so I, I do think there needs to be more. And similarly to Councilmember, uh, Shulman, I have a lot of seniors in my district. And the further challenge on top of that is that we have, we're one of two city council districts that have no railways. So there are no ways, there are no Long Island Railroad, um, system in my district at all. And so that means that transportation, um, getting around for older, uh, older adults is, is going to be more challenging moving forward. And, um, so that's why, you know, the home delivered meal program is so crucial. Um, and as you know, Commissioner, you know, I used to run the HTML program at KCS and also the two DIFTA-funded senior centers that we had, and older adult centers moving forward. Um, so I know that it's been quite challenging during, uh, the pandemic. And so thank you for all the work you guys do. And, um, I just wanted a little bit, uh, if, if you could go into a little bit more clarity, I guess, on how, um, well, I'll start with this one first, because, uh, when you, when you originally did the assessments for why people were refusing the recovery meals, I know you touched upon this, but is that data and information that you're collecting in terms of why they're refusing the services? Is it related to onerous processes and resistance to giving information? Because I know sometimes that happens, especially in immigrant communities. And is there any consideration being given to the possibility of providing access to meals uh, without going through the intensive case management assessment? Because I know that in and of itself can be very onerous as well.
So, so I want, I just want to make sure that I didn't misunderstand. No one has refused recovery meals. You know, people have said, we no longer need them, we no longer want them, and they.
For the HDMI, yeah.
Um, what people, what I think my statement earlier that you may be referring to was of those who were on recovery meals, who the thousand two hundred or, or two thousand, I think it was a thousand two hundred, a thousand five hundred, who did not want to go through a home-delivered meals assessment. And, um, that, that, that's, that's the number. Uh, we, we will look into what some of those reasons are, but as I said earlier, you know, these are individuals, as you, you just stated, you know, they, they're unfamiliar with it, they've lived independently, they don't want to get engaged in this process. And so it's, it's a process that we have to go through an educational process to make sure that they're not putting themselves in a situation, um, where may, that may turn into a more severe situation later on. But we are looking at that very closely. Uh, we will be able to get a better answer to those things as we continue this survey that we will do with our three partners for those clients on our recovery meals. Um, but there is no way that we can bypass the home-delivered meals assessment to make, to deem someone eligible for home-delivered meals.
Right. So I guess that sort of is the perfect segue to my next question. So, I mean, so addressing those additional, uh, potential clients that may be going into the system, um, are the case management agencies going to also be doing those assessments and screening? And, and I, and I say that because, um, already I think some of the, uh, uh, case management, uh, and the HDM program, from my understanding, is sort of at full capacity. And so I, I hate to word, use the word waitlist, because I know that, you know, there was that before, but, um, you know, how, um, you know, how is it that the, um, case management agency's roles are going to be played in terms of the screenings, like capacity-wise?
Uh, case management agencies are always, uh, overextended. I, I, I would be neglect to say that they're not, you know, the, the needs constantly outpace the capacity. Um, and that is another one of those areas. If we are looking at increasing home-delivered meals, there has to be the companion piece for case management agencies, right? But, uh, we are not at capacity, uh, yet, uh, Councilmember Lee. Um, that is something that we, we monitor very, very carefully. And we've discussed with our, all of our home, uh, delivered meals providers. And, um, that doesn't say that by district, they might, somebody might be, you know, uh, but overall as a system, uh, we try to stay within that district. If the need becomes so great that we can have another provider satisfy that, that service, we would do that. Uh, the goal is always by district, but as overall as a system, we're not at capacity. And we have the fluidity to do that.
Um, just out of curiosity, uh, because I know that originally when Bloomberg sort of separated the, the two, so that it's like the whole, you know, the meals program, you know, is one thing, and then the senior centers or OACs are another, right? So it's not that one or one organization is necessarily doing all of those or of the HDM contracts. Because I know that the, the contracts for how to, and the qualifications to become a case management agency um, are pretty onerous in terms of the numbers. And so is that something for the next round that you guys are thinking of in terms of reevaluating? Because it, it, because what ends up happening is that it's only these really large agencies that could qualify for these types of services. But as you know, there's a lot of smaller immigrant serving groups and people with specific cultural, um, expertise that cannot qualify for that. So I just wanted to hear your thoughts on that if possible.
I, I know, frankly, I welcome your thoughts on that, uh, because. I wel, uh, I welcome your thoughts, because that's how we started the conversation about expansion of, of older adult clubs to more ethnic groups and to more, you know, it's, and we did that with the commitment to Danny Drum and to, uh, Councilmember Chin at the time, was to help develop the capacity. So that is something that I would love to explore with you more about how is it that we can develop capacity in some other sites so that they could become, I mean, but that's a longer range goal, right? Um, but how do we start developing capacity so that we could expand case management agencies to be more inclusive of the new communities and the populations that reflect New York City? I believe that we, that's a requirement for each, each case management agency is that they must, their staff must reflect the community that they serve and must be able to respond in the languages that's currently a requirement. Those, a lot of the specifications for case management agencies are determined by the state. But that being said, we could come up with a strategy, a longer-term strategy to how to develop capacity, just as we did. And it took us two years to take some of the small nonprofit, um, older adult clubs, um, and to turn them into full competitive enough and give them enough technical assistance that they can be competitive to become a full, fully operational senior, uh, older adult club. See, even I do it, an older adult club. And so, um, you know, that is something that I would welcome exploring with you, uh, further and look at what the implications of that are. A long term and also what would be required, uh, for us to, uh, to develop that. So.
Sounds good.
That sounds great. Thank you for that. Michael, on the Benny, one more thing for us to start considering.
I know. I like to also give myself more homework after these hearings.
Right, you are. You just did, because you just recruited yourself.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and just, just curious, because after July one, because I know that there's, you know, obviously, um, a system in place. Uh, you know, I mean, there's a system in place now. And after July one, um, what is the plan basically to make sure that, um, the folks from the current recovery meals are getting switched over to the HDM? Um, I know that before you were saying it might be hard to peg down a timeline. Uh, but I know that a lot of the providers are, are a bit nervous regarding, um, you know, if and, if and when they have to, uh, input, for example, potentially new clients into their system. Also, what does that mean for additional money and resources that we may need to add to the budget? Um, so I'd like to sort of hear some of your thoughts on that, because we need to, and I think the education piece, to your point earlier, is important. How do we plan on, um, successfully assessing and educating and informing those eleven thousand seven hundred folks that you were talking about before? Um, because I just want to make sure that, um, we, we also, you know, after July one, that the providers have a clear understanding as well of like how they need to be ready, as well as um, what that looks like from a funding perspective?
I, I, I'm going to answer that in the most thoughtful possible way that I can. These are conversations we have regularly with, uh, our deputy mayor. Deputy Mayor is very committed to, uh, looking at what the, uh, needs are and, uh, also looking at what the potential is. Our deputy mayor and our mayor are very much aware of the growth that this city is experiencing in terms of the older population. And I think that they're also quite aware and very supportive of the fact that, you know, in a matter of seven years, uh, there will be more older adults and there will be individuals under the age of eighteen and what those, what infrastructure implications that also leads to, all right? So there's a whole variety of issues and policies that we look at today to prepare and plan for the future. And also some intergenerational programming. So I think my answer to you is, I don't have an answer right now. My answer to you is that in partnership, in a very close and deliberate partnership with our deputy mayor and our mayor, we're looking at those things moving forward. And, and, you know, we expect the same partnership with the city council to do that. Because we all know, um, that, what was it that the speaker said, the older adults are the jewels of the city of New York? You know, they created New York and they continue to create. And, and we don't even sometimes lose sight of the fact of the assets and contributions they're making to the economy of New York. And so I think, um, there is a conversation that we're constantly having. And, you know, I'll introduce, the other conversation we're having is, you know, inflation went from five percent to seven point seven percent to seven point nine percent. Uh, in the two areas that are most affecting older adult services, which is meals, food and gasoline. And so, you know, we're having all of those conversations. Um, as we speak, you know, and are, and are looking for solutions to those. But those are ever-evolving and, um, and we're aware of them. So I don't want you to think that we're not aware of them. But I wish I could have a, you know, finite answer for you, but we, we don't right now. We're just, we're all working towards what, what are the, what are the options? And then where do we move from here?
Okay. Um, if there's any way that we could be also helpful in terms of the conversations around, um, you know, timeline, because I, I would imagine that some of the timeline question comes from the bottom pieces. I'm in the thick of things right now. So, you know, especially when you're saying, you know, we need more, um, than five million, uh, to meet the needs. And I know that the recovery meals is at nine dollars and fifty-eight cents per meal right now, but it's going to go up correct to eleven dollars?
Eleven sixty-two, I think it is.
Eleven seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight, yeah.
Thank you for that, Councilmember.
I don't know if recovery is going up.
No, no.
So the HDM.
HDM.
Right, right, right.
We wouldn't give them an increase.
Right. So, so I guess as we try to figure out what that looks like in terms of how they're going to transition into HDM, what the timeline is, what the numbers are going to look like for the budget, if you, if you could keep us updated on the timeline, that would be awesome. And.
I, I make a commitment to you that after this hearing, we will go back to the drawing board with Michael, myself and our three providers and come up with a timeline that would make sense for all of us. Uh, and, and, and keep you informed of that, all right?
Yes. I mean, well, yes, in the, hopefully, we need to get the.
To have all of this completed, you know, sometime in June so that we could have a plan, you know, should we need to for July first.
Right.
And what the options are.
Um, the other question I had was actually around capital needs, if there are any, because I know that in the past, uh, just had mentioned that they were gonna, uh, provide more vans and vehicles. And especially like I mentioned before, with us being a transit desert in Eastern Queens, for example. Um, are there still plans to try to put that in the budget for new vehicles? Because I know a lot of them are falling apart.
Yeah, no, at this point, we are, we're in discussions with OMB about that. But at this point, there is no, that, that we were hoping that we could, uh, replace some of the hotshot vehicles and some of the vans. But at this point, you know, as you know, the city has, you know, imposed, uh, not imposed, the city has required a three percent peg to look at the budgetary constraint that the city is going through. And so that was one of those items that we can no longer consider at this time. All right?
Okay. And perhaps that's something we can think about on, through other pots of money. Because I know that especially if we're going to increase the number of seniors that are in these meal delivery programs, that's definitely going to be, become an ongoing issue. So that's good to know. Um.
That transportation deserts, I'm going to go back to your earlier concern. We do have a program that we are, uh, we just initiated, or I think it's in its first year, um, and trying to recruit members for, which is the DIFTA My Ride, which is nine districts throughout the city of New York that are transportation deserts. But it is something that, you know, we continue to work with and have to advocate on behalf of Accessa Ride to make sure that we can improve that service so that we could expand that. Because transportation deserts are a real concern for us, but in the outer boroughs.
Right. Yeah, no, definitely. And just for, for the, if I could switch real quick to the OACs. By the way, I think the point that, I don't know if, uh, Chair Mirley can hear me, uh, right now, because I know she's in transit. But I think the list that she was referring to, which I know is from a couple of years ago, um, that was when the get food program started originally. And I think providers were just having a hard time getting lists of who receiving meals on their end compared to who are members in our OACs. And so I think that was the frustration that a lot of providers had. So I just wanted to clarify that for Chair Mirley also. Uh, but, but that list is, you know, now, now it's synced.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that for me also.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, because we were trying to get an understanding as well at the time. We're like, which seniors are getting meals? Because we don't know which, which seniors are getting meals. So, but it's, it's not an issue anymore, um, from my understanding. So, um, but for the older adult centers, uh, because I know that there's like this weird thing where they're sort of at, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but are, a lot of them are still under twenty-five percent capacity restrictions? Um, but is there, uh, is there a way to lift that under the current guidelines, given that everything is shifting with COVID and?
It's, it, yes, they're under. When, when, um, KETA NYC was lifted, older adults were excluded from that. When, when it was initiated, older adults were, uh, centers were excluded from that. And when they were lifted, older adult centers were excluded from that. So the, the guidance that we have from the Department of Health and it, we're, and we're in constant conversation with them about, um, looking at, at what that guidance is. It is twenty-five percent. There is the opportunity to expand that from twenty-five percent, should additional guidance be, um, can they adhere to some of the additional guidance? Um, and, um, that limitation has, you know, we're in, this is ever-evolving. And so we're in constant conversations about where we are, um, with all of the changes that are going throughout the city. But what we are adhering to is the most current guidance that we have is the twenty-five percent capacity. And then the, uh, older adult club has the option to expand if they can adhere to some other new guidance and new provisions.
Yeah, because I'm curious to know if with the ending of the recovery meals program, if we're anticipating is an increase in, uh, the folks that are wanting to come out to the OACs. And so that's why I was just wondering if there's any way to know what those numbers look like?
I think, I think the broader conversation for us, and I'm supposed to only answer the questions that you ask and not embellish. But I think the, uh, the broader conversation for us is, uh, you know, that older adult clubs are still not at, at capacity, uh, for a variety of reasons, you know. And all older adult clubs are not open for all services either, for a variety of reasons. And, and those are the kind of considerations that we're, we're, we're exploring all the time with them.
Okay. Um, and I know that, uh, with the new RFPs for the OACs, uh, you know, they were, the, the contracts for the previous RFP were, were over in December. But are all the new contracts fully registered? Because I know some of the groups even in February still didn't have their contracts finalized yet. And so just curious to know if.
Michael, you can answer that. I think, I think most are registered now with just an exception of a handful.
Yeah, handful, our handful have certain issues that we're trying to resolve.
Um, sorry.
But they'll all, they're, they're all still good. The date, December one, December fifteen.
Uh, I think those are most of their questions, but I'm sorry, I know, I, I know that I'm throwing a lot at you guys. So I appreciate you indulging me in my question. Um, yeah, I just, I, if, if I could just end with one final, um, comment, I guess, which is that I, I want to echo Councilmember Shulman's remarks about the real need for outreach in languages, uh, to different folks. And I know that you have a lot of new providers, um, that are in the pipeline and so, which I, which I, uh, appreciate about. And so uh, definitely however we can utilize, uh, those providers would be great. Oh, sorry. One last question I remember I had was, um, are there plans to, and forgive me if you mentioned this earlier, but are there plans to uh, put in the COLAs, support increases for, for cost of living adjustments? Cause I know that inflation has, like you mentioned, um, costs have gone up, expenses have gone up, staffing, all of that, the, the materials to provide all the food. So is there, is there sort of a plan to do the COLAs?
Michael, we don't have a COLA plan, do we? I think we'll, no, we don't have a COLA plan. There's no plan for cost of living adjustments in, in, in the contracts.
Okay. Okay. Sorry, I see Chair Millie's too. So I'll stop for now and start.
Thank you.
So much.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Uh, just wanted to remind the council members that if they have questions, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. And I will turn it back over to Chair Millie for a second round of questions.
Yes, I just want to thank everyone for the condolences. Lisa, I'm at the destination now. I was asking the commissioner, what is your plan going forward in case anything like a pandemic happens again? Do you have a concrete plan in regards to, um, making sure that all our seniors are fed no matter what? And the second one, if, if we're, if you're the commissioner and it's our duty to make sure that everyone is fed, what kind of outreach are you doing to senior centers who do not have, well, have food insecurities right now, like Mount Arret in Brooklyn? That it's a full nine hundred unit of seniors, full kitchen, full, um, uh, game room, computer room, and they have no provider. So if this senior center during this, the height of this pandemic was just lost in the cracks and to this day have no food security right now, how many other senior centers that you know of? And could you give me a list? I tried to, uh, meet with you to see how many of senior centers do not have food right now? And we were never able to get any real information from you. So I was wondering, do you have a list of how many senior centers are like this senior center, Mount Arret? With no food at all, but it's a full senior center?
We have three hundred and eight uh, older adult centers as NORC's funded by the Department for the Aging. They are many other, uh, and we have a constant partnership with HPD on this. There are many older adult buildings or communities that are, have more than twenty percent older adults who do not have fully operational, uh, older adult centers.
So what are your capacity? What is your capacity to make sure that the senior centers are, um, fed? Or, um, have programs? The NORC, I'm letting you know now, that center does not have NORC. I found another one, does not have NORC. So what is the Department of Aging doing to make sure these senior centers have food? What program? What, what steps are you taking? We cannot let not one senior go without food. That's between life and death. So I need to understand what is being done in regards to the senior centers that do not have food? And do you have a list of how many in this city, this great city of New York do not have food? Is there any way you could let me know how many that I can start addressing it? And if it's in any councilmatic district, I would address the council member and we will make sure that these seniors are fed. So please, could you give me the list? And then let us, I know my colleague, um, Councilmember Hudson will do the same exact thing. Cause we do not want one senior without food going forward, even though this pandemic happened. We, we kind of have gotten through with it. Now we need a concrete plan from the Department of Aging to let us know. If anything happened like this again, what will we do? And to make sure that no other senior center or senior program, anything, a little group, if they consider it's more than thirty or forty, we should be, um, trying to feed them just as well. That's, that I would need to have a clear understanding because it's hurting me to my core. I just went before I left, I said, let me stop in to my seniors. I go there and they say the center is closed and a sign on the door and the gate shut down. How are we doing that to our seniors? Please, I, I'm almost want to cry right now. So please explain to me. I'm, I'm listening. And how many lists that senior centers do not have a sponsor? And let us as elected officials do our job and get them sponsors to make sure they are fed and have the nourishment, have the activities that they need in their golden years. Thank you.
All right. I am sure that throughout the city of New York, there are a lot of groups that you've identified that you, as you have said, where a few gather. We do not have a list of all of those. We will be more than happy to work with you and individual council members to identify what those are.
Commissioner, I beg, I beg to differ. I tried to meet with you in regards to this one senior center. And now I have found others. So if I can't rectify or meet with you to find out how we can rectify this, even though the RFP has went out and you did explain that you was, um, one RFP was going back out. So now, even if they, we don't get a RFP for that, um, sent, um, center, it's too late. It is our duty as you, the commissioner, myself as elected official, to bring resources to that senior center and every other senior center that are legally a New York City Housing, um, NYCHA, that is a bona fide senior center that used, was sponsored at one time and now they are not. No one picked up the RFP like this senior center. So how can we do this as duly elected? Um, you appointed commissioner, how can we rectify this? And I tried to meet with you to make sure we do this and it's still not done as of yet. And it's hurting me where that can be life and death to some of our seniors. Councilmember Hudson, I hope you can help me in this because it's going too long. And we don't know how fragile our seniors are and, and I don't know about anybody, one else. I'm passionate about this and it hurts me when some seniors, they can't come outside. And guess what I just found out? They walk across a six lane highway, Eastern Parkway to go get food right now at another senior center. We just waiting for disaster to happen. So Commissioner, I'm asking, I need to meet with you to see if we could come to a, a medium agreement on how we can get these centers sponsored before the budget. I can talk to the speaker and ask her, I will beg her. How can we get these seniors fed? So we have to come together on this. And I don't know why we couldn't, you couldn't meet with me in regards to this senior center. So now I have a, a, a list of them now. So what is our next step? And do you have a plan?
Can I ask her now?
I, I'm quiet now.
No, no, I don't want you to be quiet. I never want you to stop advocating. Um, and I thank you for your advocacy. I did respond to you about the Arowat and give you information as well as to the council, uh, staff, um, about what the situation was at Arowat. It wasn't a senior center. It is a complex where older adults live. Um, so and there is no sponsor for that particular commi, for that particular district. Uh, and it, and, and they, they did not have it from before. So I mean, I provided that information. I am willing to meet with you anytime that we, anytime there is, I would never not meet with a council member on any subject that involves older adults and, or any other community service. That's important. But that is, that is uh, what is important to me, uh, as well as I know, uh, your passion lies there. In terms of the, so, um, I, I believe I addressed Arowat. I will look at it again and see if there's additional information you need on that. And I'd be more than happy, our staff will immediately after this hearing is that make sure that we do have some time together. Um, but in terms of an emergency plan, we have an emergency you planning unit, uh, at emergency planning and preparedness unit at the Department for the Aging. We have every, every, uh, older adult center and program has an emergency plan. Uh, they're required to have one, uh, in the event of either local emergencies or widespread emergencies. We work very closely with the New York City Emergency Management Unit. And, um, we have been working with them, something called a FULT team, which is Food Access Lead Team. We're part of that team with the Emergency Management and the Office, uh, the Mayor's Office of Food Insecurity as well as Difter to look at, um, to look at, uh, situations like this moving forward. We've had this experience to let us know exactly what works and what are some of the best models. Um, we've never had a situation like this before. We've had local issues before. We've never had a pandemic of this proportion that was ever evolving and ever changing before. And I must say that we were, the Department of the Aging and its network of providers responded in the best possible manner, given all of the constraints. So we do have an emergency plan. Um, and we also are looking for, in anticipation of any long lasting, widespread disruption of food service, there is the Office of, uh, the City's Office of
I'm okay, I'm okay, I'm okay, I'm okay. Will, um, will it be posted or is it on your website? Um, or what preparation? Um, where would anyone see what your plan would be? And I have one more other question. Um,
I'd be more than happy to share with you our plan.
Thank you. I would love to see it on paper or something.
And there is also a plan that for every older adult service provider in the city of New York contracted under the Department for the Aging. Each and every one of them has an emergency plan that is submitted to the Department for the Aging.
Okay. Was that plan in place when this pandemic, um, hit us by surprise?
That plan is what effectuated Difter Direct immediately after the city shut down in March sixteen. That can help create Difter Direct, uh, one on March sixteenth, where senior, where older adult centers transitioned from congregate settings, where we shut down congregate settings to a grab and go model within a matter of days. And then that grew to Difter Direct within a matter of, of a week and a half, I believe, if I'm
About two, about two weeks. Yeah.
Yeah, about two weeks to Difter Direct. Then we went from twenty-five thousand meals to forty-four thousand meals. It was beyond the capacity and, and at that time simultaneously, the mayor created a food czar and Get Food was established. So we already had that experience and in anticipation, um, in anticipation of any event like that, the Office of Emergency Management has created and has been working with throughout these past few months with a group, uh, with a group called FULT.
Fault? I never heard that. Fault. Okay. What are? Thank you. And my last question, Chair, um, how is DIFDA assume, um, assisting senior since centers in providing safe and welcoming environments for seniors to return? And how vocal are you into asking the mayor to get, since we are letting up, can we up it maybe to fifty percent capacity? To letting the seniors back into the senior centers?
I have the, the total trust and confidence in our network of providers that they always pre, uh, establish and provide a welcoming environment for older adults to return to the senior centers, all right, to the clubs. And so I have the utmost confidence that at the local level that is being done.
That's the advertisement? I heard one of my colleagues talk about, um, are you, how are you letting them know the seniors centers are opening again? How are we drawing them back in? Cause I'm, what I'm doing now, I'm doing fish fries or tell them to come on. But I know twenty-five capacity, that's saying you could come in, but you can't come in. So what are we doing? What is, how are you providing, um, and letting the seniors know? Come on back. Um, as soon as I get to the mayor, we're going to try to get to at least fifty or seventy percent capacity that the seniors could come back into the senior center. And did we have anything? Um, did you have, how often did you speak to the directors of the senior centers to get a plan to see if some seniors was vaccinated and some seniors was unvaccinated? How did we handle that? I'm sorry, I'm hitting you with everything now.
You sure are. You sure are. And yeah, and you're going to tell me, and you're going to let me know which one you want me to answer and in what order? Because I am trying to, I'm recording them all down and I'm trying to get you the answers.
Thank you.
But you keep, you keep throwing one more without me being able to
It's so much.
I want to answer every one of those questions because they're important. But you got to give me the opportunity to answer one at least.
Okay, thank you. And, and we're going to have more hearings. So I'm sorry for taking up the time.
Let me, let me try to go in a drum roll here.
Okay, and I, I'm done.
As you shot them at me. First of all, there is an emergency plan. Um, there always has been an emergency plan. We've never had a pandemic. We have
No, we finished with that commissioner. You don't have to answer that. I'm talking about the, um, how we are bringing them back in.
All right, bringing them back in. He, every, the, since June fourteenth, the mayor listed, the previous mayor lifted the, uh, congregate setting ban. Everyone is well aware of that. We do everything we possibly can. Older adults have to feel comfortable. We work, we work and the answer to you about the capacity, we work hand in hand with the Department of Health, um, always to look at capacity. The science dictates what we can or cannot do. And we, the safety of the older adult is, is uppermost in our mind. So right now we have a twenty-five percent capacity. We, and to participate in congregate settings, there is a vaccine question, uh, but there's not a mandate. The other issue is that there is an opportunity, if space allows it, that programs could go beyond twenty-five percent capacity if they follow the other requirements that are, uh, imposed on an expansion beyond the twenty-five percent. So those are our, our responses to you in that this is your same concerns, a council member, our art concerns, and these are conversations we have regularly with, uh, the Department of Health, with the city of, with the Mayor's Office, with our exceptional deputy mayor. And for the answer to you, how often do I speak to, uh, the network? I meet regularly. I meet once a month with all of the senior center providers. I meet with them by borough once a month and we have, and we started that process early in the pandemic. So communication is not an issue for us. And also every provider in the city of New York knows that I am accessible by And also, every provider in the city of New York knows that I am accessible by phone. So, that is an ongoing dialogue that we have on a regular basis.
Well, I better get your number then. But, so how, this the last end of that question. How, how are you instructing the directors of these senior centers if some seniors feel uncomfortable being around some people who are unvaccinated? How, how have you instructed the directors to handle situations like that?
I don't instruct.
Well, or just talk about it, because some seniors.
What make, what's the beauty of this service, Chair, I mean, Councilwoman and Chair Mealy? What's the beauty of this network is that this is a partnership. The local providers are the experts at the local level. What we provide is guidance and, and our requirements, all right? But their interact, they know that community, they're familiar with that community. Those interactions are at the local level. We would only interfere if there was a breach or a violation of any of those interactions. So, I have the utmost confidence in how those dialogues are had. Look at us. Here we're having an important council member meeting and an important hearing, and we're having it virtually because the, the requirements are such that that's what is necessary. So, it is, that is, is a situation that each one of us deals with on a daily basis. And I have the confidence that our network addresses those. I have concerns. I'm 71 years old. I have concerns about my health and safety. I exercise options every day, whether I use my mask if you're around me. I ask people to put their mask on. We are all exercising some decisions all the time around this pandemic. And I have the utmost confidence in the network addressing the needs of the older adults that have concerns in their respective community.
Okay, then I, I will yield to my colleagues, turning it back over to our deputies.
Chair Mealy, you are always welcome to ask me any question, and I will give you the most forthright answer that you deserve and that I would give you.
Well, not just deserve, this city deserve. I will be requesting your number that we can really have a conversation. I appreciate it. Thank you.
My number's available and it will always be available to you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair Hudson.
Thank you, Chair Mealy. I'll now turn it over to Chair Hudson for follow-up questions.
Thank you so much. Okay, after seeing significant increases during much of the pandemic, DIFTER's home delivery meals program saw an 11% decrease in seniors served in the first four months of FY '22 compared to the first four months of FY 2021. Shouldn't this program be growing as New York started winding down its emergency food programs last fall?
Yeah, that's an excellent question, by the way. Let me just clarify that for you. The number that you see is a number that is, is the MMR number, and that number is based on expenses, all right, not actual units served. So, when a program invoices, that is what we report in our MMR, all right? One of the challenges that we've been having, after I've said all of this confidence that I have in the network, which I do, we are, we've been facing a major challenge with some of our home-delivered meals providers. They are not invoicing in time. We have in particular about six, six of them who are way behind in their invoicing. And so, there is a lot of unknown data for us. We know what the STAR system tells us, how many meals are being served by the STAR system, but we can't verify that because the MRR, the MMR is based on expenses. So, it looks as if the number is lower because we have to report against that. So, we're having this challenge with people invoicing on time. And the other challenge that we have about on-time invoicing, which is a real concern for us, is that that means that there are revenues out there that we can't plan for if they're not going to be expended, that we can shift to other programs who may have greater needs. And so, it presents a, a major issue for us and for the network as a whole. So, we're, we've been working very closely with, with those providers to say on-time invoicing is critical for a variety of reasons. So, you're right. It looks like a decrease, but in actuality, it's not a, a decrease. There's been an increase in those meals based on the STAR system, which is the client data system.
Understood. Okay, we can, we'll just follow up if we need to.
Sure, sure. And we'll keep you posted on that, you know, and, and I, and keep talking to you about the challenge with this, with this disconnecting in the data because of invoicing, all right?
Okay. I know you all now have like inefficiencies are, I think she's called. So, we can add that to the list for her.
The, the. By the way, is an excellent individual, Melanie LaRoca.
Yep, she is, she is.
Excellent person. Yeah, so that's one of the things we're looking at, a companion piece of on-time invoicing. Just as we have a, a requirement of on-time payment, we would like a companion piece of that for on-time invoicing.
Got it. The per meal, just going back to the, I know Councilmember Lee brought up the, the rate increase for meals from 10.68 to 11.78. And I just wanna confirm that the city is actually on pace to increase that rate starting July 1.
Yeah, we are.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
You know, the, the contracts won't be amended, you know, but it'll all be retroactive till Ju- July 1, yeah.
Okay. And then you talked earlier about diversity of meal choices. And so, I'm just wondering also if the, the HDM program will expand so that folks can receive more than one meal per day in the near or distant future? And is this also something that you're hearing from clients? Have they requested an increase in meals?
I can't say that for a fact, that, that has been a conversation. But that is something that, you know, in my next meeting with the home-delivered meals program, we have not planned for a second meal. We have the, the weekend meals provided by City Meals on Wheels, but we have not provided by, for a second meal. The older American Act only requires us to provide one nutritious meal a day. So, but we will, in my next meeting with home-delivered meals provider, with the providers, I meet with them monthly, I will, I will pose the question, has this demand, you know, or has this surfaced, all right? And, and we will be able to respond to that and present that, you know, to, to everybody, City Hall and our colleagues, you know.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I would love to follow up on that because City Meals on Wheels, which is, you know, we all know, I think, a marvelous organization, but was, you know, founded essentially out of the need for providing weekend meals because at one point, didn't provide meals on the weekends to seniors, the older adults. And just the same as they need to eat on the weekends, they also need to eat perhaps more than one meal a day. So, would love to, to, to further discuss that with you.
Yeah, and there's some programs, you know, in terms of the congregate sites, not in home-delivered meals. In the congregate sites, there are some programs that provide a breakfast, and there are some programs that provide a dinner. So, there is a precedent for that.
Right. Okay, great. If the plan has always been for a portion of those in the recovery meals program to transition to DIFTER's home-delivered meals program or senior center congregate meal or grab and go programs, why aren't the budgets for those programs being increased in the FY 2023 budget to accommodate the additional clients? And how, how do you plan to help providers build their capacity to accommodate these folks?
I believe, it's one of those things that we have to monitor carefully and continuously to see what the impact is, how many will actually transition, what are we trying to solve for? And as always, that's a conversation we continue with OMB and with our, our deputy mayor, who are, you know, always with us looking at future directions. But the data will indicate what that need is, and right now, we don't have that, that, a clear picture of that, as we said earlier.
Okay. Sorry, I just wanna make sure I'm on track here. Are you connecting recovery meals clients to any food programs and other agencies or nonprofits?
I think, I think in our, in our, in our portfolio of options, that is included. I mean, just yesterday or the day before yesterday, I was speaking to one of the current providers about, you know, and temporary meal delivery program using an intergenerational approach, using SYEP. So, there's been a lot of program designs and options that we've been exploring. But it's exactly what it is until, until we get, you know, to sense what the, what the magnitude of the problem is and what the magnitude of the need is. But all of those kind of, you know, we're looking at, you know, as a possibility, the role of pantries, the role of a coupon program. There's a variety of things that we're putting into the hopper as options. But until, you know, again, I don't wanna repeat myself and sound redundant, but until we know what the magnitude of the, of the, of the situation is, we can plan accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
And remember that there's been, and the other thing I wanted to say is that there's been a continuous drop, you know, in individuals just not, you know, no longer wanting the meals. So, that is also factored into this.
Right. I guess, you know, with, with that, though, we know, and, you know, we've, we've all mentioned the, the stats. So, we know that there will be a huge increase in the older adult population over the next few years. And so, I'm wondering if, if you're using what we've seen, you know, with the pandemic and, and even now, you know, with this specific shift in, in the meals being provided, if you're using this as an opportunity to maybe consider changes and investments in the broader home-delivery meals system and thinking about, you know, meeting the needs of a, of a more diverse and what will be more populous and robust, you know, older adult population.
And I can tell you, you know, it just gave me an idea. It's one of the things that we look at. We've got an incredible research and data team at the department that looks at data, data trends. We look at it by district. We look at it, you know, citywide. We look at it by ethnicity, we look at it by income, you know, we look at all of those different social indicators. And one of the things that I thought might be, hell, I just thought of this and maybe build up. It would be great to sit down and do, maybe with the Aging Committee, with the members of the Aging Committee, a review of that dataset, how we get to that, what we are projecting, how we projected that out. We'd be more than happy to share that data. And then even some corresponding plans for that, you know. In that conversation that I mentioned very briefly with Councilmember Lee is looking at, you know, transportation deserts, you know, we looked at service deserts, and that's how we responded and expanded the RFP, particularly in, in service desert. So, it's the, it's the thing that we're looking at on a regular basis. We'd be more than happy to share with you, just to, you know, sit down with you for an hour or so and just with you and your, the, the committee members, what those numbers are, how we, how we work with city planning, city planning data also, and, and, and come up with some future projections and what the implications of that are. We'd be, we'd be more than happy to do that with you.
I appreciate that.
As a matter of fact, Michael Bosnick would love doing that with anybody that has the opportunity to do that with.
That's great. Well, I look forward to that, and we'll certainly follow up with you on that one. I wanna go back just really quickly to, excuse me, the conversation we had earlier about the assessment and the numbers and the folks, you know, some who choose not to go through the assessment. Is there any consideration being given to the possibility of providing access to meals for those who have not or do not want to go through the intensive case management assessment that, that we currently have in place?
Is the, is the, let me, can I, can I clarify that? Or is the question directed to, if they do not want to go through the assessment for home-delivered meals, can we give them a home-delivered meals?
Essentially.
Yeah, the answer is no. The requirements by the state are that they have to go through an assessment process so that that meal is deemed a home-delivered meal. And then obviously, it's a, it's a cost center factor also. So, that, the answer is no. It has to go through that process. That is not to say that, I think at, and someone will correct me if I'm wrong on this, that if there was a congregate participant who had an, a, a situation, a temporary situation, that we could temporarily give them home-delivered meals until that situation remedy. That's a possibility. And, but I'm gonna clarify that for you because I believe that that's accurate. And Michael, or Luella, Luella, make me honest on this one. Is that, is that? That's accurate? Okay.
And then what, what about, is that only applicable to you as the agency? Or could you partner with other providers to do that, or is it applicable to everybody?
For, for, for permanent home delivery or for that temporary situation?
For, uh, permanent home delivery.
Permanent home delivery, no. It has to go, if it's an older adult 60-plus, it has to go through the assessment process.
Okay. Thank you. And then have you surveyed, I know we talked a bit about this earlier, so I just wanna circle back to make sure I'm, I'm clear and that this specific question was answered. But have you surveyed those who did not transition back to senior centers and senior center providers to determine why some of them haven't returned?
No, we have not done that specifically because I think, I think right now, what we're doing is working with all of the older adult clubs to just handle their own reopening challenges and, and their own outreach. They've done outreach to, to, to new clients, and it's just this whole situation of where people are in terms of reopening the centers fully and fully engaging. You know, I think, like all of us, you know, people are making decisions around their own safety. So, we're working primarily and closely, and Luella, please opine on this, with the, with the older adult clubs around reopening and some of the challenges that they may be facing with that.
Okay, okay.
Luella, is that, is that accurate?
That is accurate. I mean, when we started this whole process, the older adult providers did reach out to their, their clients to find out, you know, who's coming back, when are they coming back? Because before they reopen, they had to, you know, make this decision and assessment as to what they're going to need. And it's just that our seniors had various reasons for being hesitant to go back into a congregate setting. So, they are doing that. It's a continuous action on their part to encourage them to come back and also to reach out to them. They encourage those who need vaccinations to get vaccinated. Vaccinated, they provide that information. So, just like some of us have the same sort of hesitancy, whether we get on a bus or we get on the train, our older adults also say that type of thing, they're not ready to go back into the center, not ready to do the congregate activities. But they are doing virtual activities, and as the numbers, as Omicron has decreased, I hope, and they're also optimistic that seniors will start coming back out. So, we are really closely watching that trend to see if we see numbers are down with the positivity and also attendance. And one of the things that we, we were also monitoring was for positive cases, whether it was among the staff or among the seniors, and for the last three weeks or so, we haven't had a positivity report. So, that is, that just makes us hopeful, and we're looking forward to see our seniors going back out. Also, the weather will help them to come out too. The, the better the weather gets, the more they'll come out. So, we're waiting to see. I think this is an exciting time to kinda see where we go, where we will be since the city has reopened.
Yeah, well, we definitely wanna see them back out and, and added, so I will move to that as well. Just a, a couple of other questions. Just a, a couple of other questions. So the preliminary mayor's management report does not include the number of, of folks who've participated in senior center meals for F Y twenty one or F Y twenty two. Have you started collecting this information? And if so, what are the most recent numbers?
Let me get back to you on those numbers. I believe, hold on a minute. I might have that number. We are, we are collecting that data. We have, in total, there've been six hundred and sixty-two meals have been served by older adult centers. And that is either a grab and go model or actual offerings, you know.
Which fiscal year is that?
That fiscal, that's correct. All right.
Okay.
And a hundred and fifty-six programs are still offering grab and go, and eighty-seven are offering both. And so a total of two hundred fifteen are offering congregate meals.
Okay, but nothing for F Y twenty one, right?
No. Not yet. Let me see. No, nothing yet.
Okay.
I'll get, I'll get that. I'll get, I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, sure. And then.
Just to remind you, there is a twenty-five percent capacity that's impacting some of that number.
Yeah.
I know, we just, we just didn't have any, any numbers.
No, there are, no, we, we don't have, we don't have that. We, we roughly have something for this year. But we don't have for twenty twenty-one. I'll get, I'll get that number to you.
Okay. Thank you. And then have you presented any new needs to O M B for the executive budget that would improve outreach to seniors and get them back to the centers?
Not an outreach specific. We've addressed cost, of, of cost, inflationary costs. And we've, and, and obviously focused on home delivered meals. We, all of our new needs will be, have been resubmitted to O M B. We are, you know, we're in constant conversation with them. It's inflationary cost. It's increased in home delivered meals. And there were two other categories. And Michael, and we'll, we'll discuss those with you at, fully in the, in the budget conversation.
Okay. And then lastly, just thinking about the providers, have you heard from providers as to whether or not they are, are comfortable with and prepared for the recovery meals program closing as of, I mean, technically June thirtieth?
The providers in the sense of the network that may be absorbing some of these individuals. It's a conversation that we have regularly. It, it'll be one that we, in the next two months where I have my monthly meeting with the providers, it's one that we will have a fuller conversation about, just letting them know that these individuals are now aware of a network and what the implications of that are for, for them. So in my monthly meetings, that will definitely in the next two to three monthly meetings, that will be raised. As for the providers who are actually doing recovery meals, just had a meeting with them prior two days ago to talk about, you know, next steps and getting their, their thinking on the evolution of this and preparing ourselves for the sunset of this. And that's an ongoing conversation. And based on those conversations, then we inform and develop some plans that we share with the city.
Okay. You know, it would be great. I know we're going to hear from, from some folks later, providers and members of the public. It'd be great. I don't know if you're planning to stay behind or if somebody from your team can stay behind just to make sure that we're, you can hear directly from them about any concerns they may have.
The, the DIFTA team stays on. I don't, I, I have, I, I'm, I'm running late or going to run late soon for my next meeting. But, but I, if, but, but we always, we always stay to listen to the testimony for a variety of reasons.
Okay, great. Thank you. I think that's all I've got for now. Thank you so much again, Commissioner. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate this opportunity. We'll get back to the three things we promised, the data for twenty twenty-one and the, the plan and then scheduling some time with Michael Bosnick so that you can get a prima on how he makes this stew for our future directions. All right.
Great. We will absolutely follow up with you on, on all of that and then some. So look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Bye.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioner. And seeing no other hands raised by other council members to ask questions, we will now begin public testimony. The first panel of public testimony in order of speaking will be Kevin Jones, followed by Dorothy Yang, followed by Tara Klein. I'd like to remind everyone that I will be calling individuals one by one to testify. Each panelist will be given three minutes to speak. Please begin your testimony once the sergeant cues you. Council members who have questions for a particular panelist could use the Zoom raise hand function and I will call on you in the order you raise your hand after the panelists have completed their testimony. For panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you and the sergeant in arms will set the timer and give you the heads up to go. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. I will now call on Kevin Jones.
Time starts now.
Good afternoon, Chair Hudson, Chair Mealy and members of the Committee on Aging and the Subcommittee on Senior Centers and Food Security. My name is Kevin Jones and I'm the Associate State Director of Advocacy at A A R P New York, representing seven hundred and fifty thousand members of the fifty-plus community in New York City. Thank you for providing A A R P with the opportunity to testify today's oversight hearing to talk about the critical importance of addressing food insecurity among older New Yorkers, as well as to discuss the status of DIFTA's Home Delivered Meals Program and the city's Recovery Meal Service for the sixty-plus New Yorkers. Prior to the COVID nineteen pandemic, food insecurity was a growing issue among older New Yorkers. According to one study, an estimated one hundred and eighty-three thousand adults above the age of sixty-five, about eleven percent of New York City's entire older adult population live in food insecure households and Black, Hispanic and Asian American households across New York City are disproportionately impacted by food insecurity and hunger. As the mayor and city council continue to help New Yorkers recover from the devastation caused by COVID nineteen, we believe that New York City should continue to prioritize the issue of food insecurity by implementing policies and programs that will help address the immediate nutrition needs of our city's older population, while also making the city's network of meal providers and food distribution programs more resilient in the event of future pandemics or other related emergencies. A A R P recommends that the mayor and the city council implement, implement several policies to address the issue of food insecurity among older adults, including expanding the city's total funding allocated for the Home Delivered Meals Program by four million to reach more eligible New Yorkers and provide them with two culturally appropriate meals per day, seven days a week. The city should also invest an additional three million dollars into the program to support home delivered meals on weekends. We also commend the city and DIFTA for their announcement at the end of twenty twenty-one that will increase the per meal reimbursement rate for providers of home delivered meals to eleven dollars and seventy-eight cents per meal, starting on July first of this year. And look forward to working with the Adams Administration to ensure that the city's partner meal providers have the resources to provide nutritionally and culturally appropriate meals for their clients. Second, we, as the city, develop a citywide emergency food plan for future pandemics or related emergencies, which would include a neighborhood by neighborhood plan for food distribution during declared states of emergency, as well as suspend eligibility requirements for key programs to ensure that older adults in need have full access to meals and food during declared emergencies. We asked that they create a citywide educational outreach campaign on SNAP enrollment, starting in the neighborhoods hardest hit by COVID nineteen, to educate hundreds, hundreds of thousands of older New Yorkers about their eligibility for the program, as well as to provide them with guidance on how to enroll in the program and information on the benefits that SNAP would provide. Thank you for providing me the time to testify today. I'm going to submit testimony with a few more details, but I'm happy to take any questions if anyone has.
Thank you, Kevin, for your testimony. We will now move on to Dorothy Yang.
Time starts now.
I want to thank the committee for holding this hearing and giving the Asian American Federation, A A F, the opportunity to testify on the needs of our senior community and service providers. I'm Dorothy Jiang, Membership and Capacity Building Coordinator at A A F. Our organization represents the collective voice of more than seventy member nonprofits serving one point three million Asian New Yorkers. We're here today in part because we convene the seniors working group, the first and only Asian senior-focused advocacy coalition in New York, which is made up of twelve Asian-led, Asian-serving A A F member organizations. Asian seniors comprise thirteen point nine percent of the city's senior population and the number of Asian seniors in poverty increased by sixty-three point four percent between twenty-ten and twenty-nineteen, the largest percent increase of any major racial group. We're also here because our seniors are heavily targeted by anti-Asian violence. As we mourn the recent deaths of several Asian seniors, many of our seniors are still anxious and on high alert. As our partners in the Asian community can attest, the dual crises of COVID nineteen and anti-Asian violence are fundamentally changing how our seniors seek out services. As a result, the city must adapt in support of our senior service providers. Food insecurity is one of our coalition's top concerns alongside anti-Asian violence, senior centers and mental health. Culturally competent meal programs have become our seniors' lifeline when they have been understandably terrified to leave their homes. This makes it even more critical that our seniors are receiving as much support as possible each time they venture out to one of their trusted CBOs. The meal programs our CBOs offer not only provide food, but also opportunities to participate in social activities and access services, all in languages they can speak and understand. However, staff members have been stretched past their limits without enough institutional support. This matches a broader long-term trend of Asian CBOs being underfunded. From fiscal year twenty, two thousand and two to twenty fourteen, the Asian American community received a mere one point four percent of the total dollar value of the city's social service contracts. To meet the needs of our most vulnerable, we have the following recommendations. One, increase funding to Asian-led, Asian-serving senior service providers, including food programs, case management, seniors and centers and digital literacy. These providers deserve easier access to funds as they provide irreplaceable services our marginalized alters can actually use. Two, increase funding for the A A P I Community Support Initiative to sustain and expand high-demand direct services and fund critical anti-violence programming in our Hope Against Hate campaign. This includes safety ambassador programs providing physical protective accompaniment, upsended and anti-violence trainings and victim support services. Three, expand funding to include culturally competent, in-language and senior-focused mental health service models. This includes prioritizing CBOs that have a history of providing low-cost, non-traditional services for funding opportunities. As we continue to navigate the impacts of the pandemic, our CBOs will be instrumental in restoring trust between our most vulnerable populations and the city. Thank you for allowing us to testify and we look forward to working with all of you to make sure our senior communities get the support they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Dorothy. I will now call on Tara Klein to testify. Followed, after Tara Klein will be Farhana Hussein, then followed by Crystal Simmons, followed by Gregory Morris. Tara?
Time starts now.
Great. Thank you, Chair Hudson, Chair Mealy and council members for hosting today's hearing. I really appreciate the opportunity to weigh in today. My name is Tara Klein and I am a senior policy analyst with United Neighborhood Houses. U N H is a policy and social change organization that represents forty neighborhood settlement houses in New York that reach over seven hundred sixty-five thousand New Yorkers from all walks of life. Our settlement house members have been on the front lines of COVID nineteen to meet older adults' needs, including running older adult centers, operating home delivery meals, H D M programs, and one that we'll hear from that operates a DIFTA recovery meals contract. They've been supporting the city's vaccination effort and much more. And now with the DIFTA recovery meals contracts expected to end at the end of this fiscal year, there's a severe lack of clarity about how the older adults still on the program will continue to get the meals they need, which we now know is about eleven thousand four hundred individuals. People will have to choose between receiving meals from the H D M program, attending an older adult center for in-person or grab and go meals, attending a food pantry, signing up for SNAP, or finding another option. This is more than just a menu of options for older adults to choose from. There are deep systemic needs to operationalize this transition and boost programmatic capacity. And we worry that, given the timeframe, the city is unprepared. Critically existing DIFTA programs will not be able to absorb those individuals without a few things. First, expanded support and capacity for the already overburdened case management system that screens older adults for H D M eligibility, which cannot suddenly absorb thousands of new people on a tight timeline. The city should consider creating a separate streamlined H D M assessment process for this population that still screens them. Next, we need significant funding for DIFTA programs for capacity increases as well as infrastructure needs such as vans, kitchen equipment and storage space. Apart from the per meal reimbursement rate for H D M, which we are extremely grateful for, and we have been fighting for that for years, we're disappointed that no new funding has been allocated for this transition in the F Y twenty-three preliminary budget. And finally, the city cannot afford to wait another day to plan for this transition. And we can't wait until the end of this fiscal year or June to inform providers that their new capacity increases are going to happen on July first. Because they need time to make the transition happen, they need to create new groups, hire new staff and maybe secure new vans if they need to and much more. We're already cutting it really close. So given as well as ideal, we hope that as the city is planning for this transition, that contract extensions for a couple of months perhaps for the recovery meals contracts shouldn't be off the table. There's a lot more detail in my written testimony. I also have a lot more to say in the budget hearing. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Tara, for your testimony. I will now call on Farhana Hussein.
Time starts now.
Thank you for providing us this opportunity to speak in front of the City Council Committee on Aging in conjunction with the Subcommittee on Senior Centers and Food Insecurity. I'm here today on behalf of India Home, a nonprofit organization founded by healthcare professionals dedicated to serving South Asian older adults in New York. India Home leads the city's largest and most secular senior center programs aimed at improving the quality of life of immigrant seniors living in Queens and beyond. Since our inception, we have touched the lives of over five thousand older adults through our holistic and culturally competent programs such as congregate meals, senior center services, case management, mental health services, advocacy and educational and recreational activities. We pivoted into delivering a robust COVID nineteen relief and recovery program at the onset of this pandemic. And with the hard work of our staff and volunteers, we provided essential services to over two thousand vulnerable seniors in high-risk communities. Our impact includes having provided over thirty thousand halal and vegetarian meals sensitive to the dietary needs of our seniors who practice diverse faiths, over one thousand two hundred grocery packages, more than thirty-five thousand service units of virtual programming, and over thirty thousand wellness checkup calls. And we are continuing to provide these services as our city returns to normalcy. Food insecurity, a massive lack of culturally competent and multilingual case management services, chronic physical health and mental health issues such as depression, dementia, prolonged social isolation and loneliness continue to pose some of the most critical challenges that our seniors face. There is an undeniably high demand and need for the services we're providing. And the fact that we now serve more than five hundred seniors on a weekly basis, which is a mighty two hundred percent increase from twenty nineteen, as well as have over two hundred twenty-five seniors regularly attending our creative aging programs so that they're engaged and socially connected, is a testament to this growing need and to strong demand and that our services are being greatly utilized and valued by seniors. At India Home, we're working hard to address the challenges faced by the underserved seniors we serve and have a one hundred percent open doors policy. However, our community resources are running thin and we are understaffed. Though we were recently awarded the RFP to contract a center directly with D F T A, this is just for one of our four sites. It doesn't cover all of the associated costs for that center and we are about to establish two more centers this year. The need for our services, especially culturally tailored meal programs, continues to grow more than the funding we receive. I'm here today to advocate for greater interest increases to the D F T A budget. I asked that the committee increase funding towards expanding senior center programs, especially meal and creative aging programs, and support growing case management needs. Our communities cannot continue to be shortchanged, especially when they exist at intersections of marginalization. Thank you for your time and cooperation.
Thank you for your testimony. I will now turn to Crystal Simmons for testimony.
Time starts now.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Crystal Simmons. I'm the Senior Director of Food and Nutrition Services at Stanley Essex Neighborhood Center. I'd first like to offer my condolences to Chair Mealy. I'd like to thank Chair Hudson for bringing us together on the future of Home Delivered Meals Program and NYC sixty and over Recovery Meal Service formerly known as Get Food. I have been an H D M director for thirteen years in New York City, working to diminish food insecurities for seniors, for seniors, by providing the resources necessary for them to live longer. working to diminish food insecurities for seniors by providing the resources necessary for them to live longer, healthier, and more independently. We know seniors are among the most vulnerable and disproportionately impacted population throughout this public health crisis. Since the onset of the pandemic, the Food and Nutrition Department has been at the forefront of feeding New York City's most underrepresented and oppressed population. The past two years only magnify the impacts of this longstanding issue. The NYC Recovery Meal Service was launched in the wake of the pandemic in twenty-twenty. In the fall of twenty-twenty-one, Isaac Center, along with Encore Community Services and Catholic Charities, began servicing collectively ten thousand seniors residing in New York City with seven fresh and healthy meals each week. Without your intervention, the recovery meal service will end on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. As we get closer to the end of this program, we would like to receive clarity on how the city plans to serve the seniors who are relying on this service now and would return to experiencing food insecurity without support. We surveyed our clients this month, and we learned the following. Eighty-six percent of our clients are satisfied by the quality of our meals. Eighty-four percent are satisfied with the taste. Eighty-six percent are satisfied with the portion size. While we are pleased with those results, the data that's keeping us up at night, twenty percent of our clients acknowledge that their existing health conditions affect their food and meal choices. Any of us who've had experience with seniors know the complexities that salt and fat have on their diets, or how oral health and dental issues lead to chewing and digestive issue. More urgently, eighty-five percent of our clients tell us that they rely on these meals to meet their nutritional needs, and seventy-six percent do not know how they will have their needs met when this program ends. We call on this committee to ensure that there will be no disruption in service to older adults on July first, twenty-twenty-two, and to commit to providing us with the resources we need to prevent food insecure seniors from falling through the gaps by increasing access to home-delivered meals and FY twenty-three, stocking our food pantries, expanding the kitchens in the community center and seniors we operate, and ensuring that our essential workforce, our meal deliverers, our drivers, our cooks, our case managers, our social workers, have a livable wage, so no senior will go hungry on our watch. Thank you to the Committee on Aging for holding this important hearing and our opportunity to submit testimony. I hope that we can continue working together. I hope that when we're reviewing the data from DIFTA, that the Meals on Wheels providers of New York City is in that same room while we continue to have these conversations. Like I said, I've been doing this for thirteen years. Part of that conversation. Thank you, Chair Hudson. I hope that I can hear from you soon. I welcome more discussions with you. Thanks.
Thank you for your testimony. I will now call on Gregory Morris. After Gregory Morris will be Jeanette Estima, Danielle Christensen, and then Kathleen DePerna. Gregory?
Time starts now.
Good afternoon, Chair Hudson and Chair Mealy. Chair Mealy, please accept our condolences. I really appreciate this opportunity to speak with you today to add to my colleague. I'm the Chief Program Officer at God of Riverside Community Center, relationship with the Isaac Center as well. I work closely with Crystal, my colleague, who I think is an extraordinary actor and presenter and personality and presence in this work. But I just want to add to something she just said, and just to kind of put it sort of a little bit of a different frame on it for our council members. As you heard from the Department for the Aging earlier, eleven thousand-plus seniors right now are receiving recovery meals. Based on the data that the Isaac Center has looked at and related to the portion of seniors that we work with or older adults that we provide recovery meals to, seventy-six percent of them are saying, I don't know what happens when this recovery meal model ends. I don't know how my needs are going to be met, and if you want to put some specific numbers to that, that's about eight thousand six hundred older adults. And if I divide them equally by council districts, well, that would turn out to be what, seventy or so per district? But we know this is not going to hit each council district equally. It's going to be the locations where Black and Brown seniors, folks, older adults who live in public housing. We're going to be talking about the locations where older adults are, and they have significant challenges that are going to be more burdened. It's going to be disproportionate in that regard. And again, we're going to see what happens when our city doesn't meet the needs of older adults. And let's face it, we're in luck. We have a mayor who champions health and nutrition and the desire to feed people. That's good news. Here's another good piece of news. We actually, the providers on this call and the folks that I know in this sector, and based on the work that we've done, we actually know how to solve this problem. But what we don't have, and what we haven't seen, and what we haven't been able to be at the table to do with the Department for the Aging and in partnership with City Hall and our council members, we haven't been able to get around the table and say, let's fix this, as Crystal said, so no one goes hungry on our watch. An investment will need to be made in home-delivered meals that does not exist now to ensure no one goes hungry. We may need to, and likely will need to, extend recovery meals to meet urgent needs when this model is scheduled to come to an end. We will need to better resource food pantries, community centers, older adult centers, to ensure that every kitchen in this city is ramped up so that we are meeting not just one meal-a-day needs, but we're meeting multiple meal-a-day needs for older adults in our city, and that those meals are refined to meet chronic conditions that many of our seniors have. I call upon you, Chair Hudson, and the committee to bring us to the table to have this conversation. We want to be able to resolve this. We want to be able to do this now, and we do not want to see the crisis that's ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Gregory, for your testimony. I will now call on Jeanette Estima.
Time starts now.
Hi, good morning, Chair Hudson and Chair Mealy. My condolences for your loss. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Jeanette Estima, and I am the Director of Policy and Advocacy at City Meals on Wheels, which, as was mentioned earlier, was established to fill a gap in weekend and holiday meals for the city's home-delivered meals program. We raise about twenty million dollars in private donations annually to ensure that homebound older adults have a meal every day of the year. In addition to the general growth and the need for home-delivered meals that we've been seeing for years, we do believe that thousands of older adults in the recovery meals program will need to transition to DIFTA's home-delivered meals program next year. But there is no funding in the preliminary budget to support these new clients, nor a broader plan for investments to address the systemic needs across the program. City Meals applauds the mayor's increase in the reimbursement rates for home-delivered meals providers. A longstanding ask from the sector that is necessary to conclude, sorry, to continue to provide the current level of services. But without additional funding for the thousands of new clients that will be coming into the program, providers won't be able to meet that increased demand, and older adults with little or no other recourse will go hungry. This new administration has an important opportunity to take a step back and consider the broader needs of the system, to look beyond these temporary solutions, and really consider how we can best support New Yorkers aging in place. Therefore, we recommend the following. First, a timely assessment of the projected increase in home-delivered meals clients. And that means both, you know, the projected number for the general growth that we're seeing as well as the clients that will be transitioning from the recovery meals programs. There are only three months left for providers to prepare for an increase in the number of meals that must be prepared and packaged and delivered. We urge DIFTA to complete their assessment and share their data as soon as possible, and to carefully consider the needs of providers as they manage this transition under such a tight timeline. Secondly, fully fund the programmatic and infrastructure investments required to expand the home-delivered meals program. We estimate that about twelve point seven million will be needed, and that would include about nine point seven million to serve approximately three thousand new clients. And three million dollars, we would like earmarked for City Meals to ensure that those new clients are able to receive weekend and holiday meals. To be clear, City Meals is not reimbursed for the meals that we fund, and we cannot reasonably expect to be able to come up with three million dollars this year to cover that new need. Additionally, providers have unusable vans in need of costly repairs, old refrigerators or stoves that need to be replaced. They lack storage space in their kitchens, and so on. DIFTA must evaluate those infrastructure needs of these programs and ensure that there is sufficient capital funding to fully address them. And finally, we ask that the city ensure the sustainability of our essential workforce by funding living wages for contracted human service workers, including fully funding Akola. Thank you very much, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Jeanette. I will now turn to Danielle Christensen.
Time starts now.
Thank you, Chair Hudson and Chair Mealy, and to every member of the Aging Committee for your time and consideration. My name is Danielle Christensen, and I'm here on behalf of God's Love We Deliver, New York City's only provider of medically tailored meals that's been in operation for thirty-five years. Last year alone, we delivered two point six million meals to ninety-three hundred clients, dependents, and caregivers. Our meals are cooked in our own kitchens with no starters, fillers, or preservatives, and delivered directly to a client's home. God's Love We Deliver does not just put a person on a diet. Our staff of eight registered dietitian nutritionists work with our clients to ensure that they receive the right meal for their diagnoses, comorbidities, allergies, and also preferences. In addition, God's Love can accommodate someone through the trajectory of their illness with soft, minced, and pureed options. God's Love fills an important gap in the city's current food response. If you're an older adult living with a serious illness such as renal failure and are unable to shop or cook for yourself, the only provider who can meet your complex needs is God's Love We Deliver. To date, the only city funding we receive is through discretionary funding. While we greatly appreciate the support, the cost of meeting the need for our services for older adults far exceeds this discretionary funding that's available. Last year, we served sixty-three hundred New York City seniors, and they received one point seven million meals from God's Love We Deliver. Over sixty percent of these services were supported with private funding, which gets harder and harder to raise each year. For certain populations, this is actually higher for seniors with end-stage renal failure, which often disqualifies individuals from eating meals from DIFTA-funded agencies. Over ninety percent of the meals we delivered to this population are funded through private donations. With the adoption of COVID nineteen safety protocols and the closure of congregate meal sites and food distribution sites, the need for medically tailored meals exponentially increased. As a provider with many years of experience home-delivering meals to people living with serious illness, God's Love saw a thirty percent increase in referrals to our program in just the first three months of the pandemic. I appreciate Chair Mealy noting that one senior should go, should not go hungry. Sorry, should go hungry because someone, because for people, for seniors, it's life or death. And we completely agree at God's Love. Despite receiving referrals from the Department for the Aging, we have no direct contractual relationship with DIFTA and are not reimbursed for the meals we provide to those that they refer to us. Furthermore, despite our advocacy efforts and despite DIFTA consultants visiting God's Love prior to the twenty-twenty RFP process, DIFTA did not include medically tailored meals in its twenty-twenty RFP. Accordingly, we are respectfully asking the committees to help us in urging the Department for the Aging to issue a separate RFP specifically for medically tailored meals for older adults living with life-altering illnesses. In the absence of a contract, we are asking this year that the council support our three hundred thousand dollar discretionary speaker request. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Danielle, for your testimony. I believe Chair Mealy has a question or comments.
Yes, I just want to salute God We Deliver. I remember them years ago. But if you do not get the three hundred thousand from the speaker's requests, what other funding resources you gonna tap into? Is it only discretionary from council members? Or would you be asking for the Brooklyn delegation, the Manhattan delegation, or progress every caucus in the city? Have you did a counter reaction on that? If you do not get that three hundred thousand speaker request funds?
Sorry, I can't, couldn't unmute myself. So we are requesting not only the three hundred thousand dollars, I just highlighted that for the testimony today, but also ten thousand from each council member, ten thousand in support of our seniors from each. We're a citywide agency, and twenty thousand from each borough delegation.
What would the ten thousand would be for? Only certain seniors with medical issues? Or just a variety of meals going to programs or to seniors homebound?
So the only qualification for our program is that you have a one serious diagnosis. It could be cancer, Alzheimer's disease, kidney failure, diabetes, and that you have trouble shopping or cooking for yourself. And so those are the only two qualifiers for our program. To answer your question, we serve people of all ages. So the funding, the only funding that we get specifically for seniors is support our seniors funding. That in all of the money from the council, we get about four hundred thousand dollars. We got four hundred thousand dollars last year. That was like an all-time high. And it all goes to food because food costs are so high. So we have a twenty-nine million dollar budget at God's Love, and a majority of that is food cost.
Okay, Dan. Thank you. I will definitely be looking for you in the budget. Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you. I will now call on Kathleen DePerna. After Kathleen will be Brianna Payden-Williams, followed by Jeremy Kaplan, followed by Josh Lee. Kathleen?
Time starts now.
Good afternoon, Chair Hudson, Chair Mealy, and my condolences for your loss, council members and staff. Thank you for the opportunity today to testify on behalf of Rethink Food, a New York City-based nonprofit with a mission to create a more sustainable and equitable food system, one where every New Yorker has access to dignified, culturally responsive, nutritious food. My name is Kathleen DePerna, and I'm the Director of Government Relations for the organization. Rethink currently operates in thirty-five council districts across all five boroughs and has plans to expand to forty districts by fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. I come to you today to discuss how our services have supported food insecure seniors across the city and how together we can continue to support them through our citywide discretionary funding requests. Rethink was founded in two thousand seventeen with a commissary kitchen with the goal of transforming excess food from restaurants, corporate kitchens, and grocery stores into healthy meals that could be provided at no cost to communities in need. The kitchen prepares on average eight thousand meals per week, which are distributed to eight CBOs in Queens, Brooklyn, and Manhattan, and last year recovered nearly five hundred thousand pounds of excess food. At the height of the pandemic, Rethink leveraged its experience to address the dual challenges of escalating food insecurity rates and restaurants facing widespread closures to launch Rethink Certified. Through this program, we partner with local restaurants to prepare delicious, culturally responsive meals that are provided free of charge to CBOs. In exchange, Rethink provides small grants to offset food, operating, and staffing costs to restaurants. In twenty-twenty-one, we delivered nearly three point three million meals to eighty-eight CBOs and invested more than fifteen million dollars into seventy-six restaurants, three quarters of which were minority and/or women-owned. We know that COVID left our seniors isolated at home and at high risk for food insecurity due to the closure of senior centers where they relied heavily on congregate meals. Rethink responded to this need for at-home meals at the height of the pandemic in partnership with the Chinatown Strong Initiative by providing nearly fourteen thousand culturally relevant meals per week delivered door-to-door to Chinatown and Lower East Side seniors and residents. In the Bronx, in partnership with Bronx House, we also provided on average seven hundred kosher meals per week for just over a year to its seniors while the senior center was closed. Today, the need still exists for our meals, and we continue to provide on average five hundred thousand meals per week to the Chinatown Lower East Side seniors and residents through five of our restaurant partners. Looking ahead, we cannot let our seniors wonder where their next meal will come from, allow restaurants to close when they're a viable conduit for feeding their community, especially while perfectly edible food is being wasted. Thank you for the opportunity to testify before you today, and we look forward to discussing how in partnership we can work together to feed the most vulnerable New Yorkers.
Thank you for your testimony, Kathleen. I will now call on Brianna Payden-Williams.
Time starts now.
Hi, everyone. I'm Brianna Payden-Williams, the Communications and Policy Associate at LiveOn New York. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and welcome to our new chair's council member. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and welcome to our new chairs, Councilmember Hudson and Councilmember Millie. During our first Aging hearing of the new term, LiveOn New York's members include more than 100 community-based nonprofits that provide core services that allow all New Yorkers to thrive in our community as we age. During the COVID-19 pandemic, food insecurity was deeply exacerbated by issues not only economic but related to access as well, as older adults were advised to stay home. And as a number of our members have and will mention in their testimony, including India Home, Isaac Center, and Encore, the Get Food program scaled to meet the growing need for nutritional assistance, yet represented a temporary solution to a more systemic hunger problem. And when this program came to a close this fall, thousands of older clients were transferred into the Department for the Aging Recovery Meal Program, which is now set to end the end of this fiscal year. Unfortunately, Mayor Adams, the preliminary budget, did not allocate funding in the fiscal year 2023, or out-year funding to support recovery meal clients who will need home-delivered meals beyond June 30. But on the other hand, you know, LiveOn New York, we're appreciative of Mayor Adams' preliminary budget. That does include investments to address the reimbursement rates within the home-delivered meals. Nonetheless, it's critical the city uses this moment and the momentum of having a new administration and city council members to go beyond short-term solutions and to instead execute long-term investments aimed at rooting out older adult hunger more holistically. And in order to adequately tackle these challenges at hand, LiveOn New York recommends the following. First, recognizing that home-delivered meal programs would not be possible without the tireless work of human service workers, and we join our partners in calling on the city to invest in a cost-of-living adjustment for all human service workers. And throughout the pandemic, human service workers across the sector have stepped up to provide critical services to keep older adults fed. And despite all this, the wages continue to lag behind as the cost of living continues to rise. Additionally, DIFTA must work with providers to assess clients, share data, and ultimately make the proper investments required to address the projected home-delivered meal demand increase for fiscal year 23, including those as a result of the recovery meal transitions. And in lieu of the detailed information, LiveOn New York and our partners estimate an estimated 12.7 million investment should be made to meet home-delivered meal demands that would result from the termination of the Get Food program. And so as the recovery meal program is set to end in June, many of the clients will continue to need nutritional support, and so support for which there's currently no funding allocated to provide. This investment would include 9.7 million to support continued growth in home-delivered meals, equating to funding to roughly 3,100 new clients at the reimbursement rate, excuse me, of 1178. Additionally, this would, this would provide 3 million to support weekend meals. Lastly, we're asking for DIFTA to assess the capital need for vans and other purchases, as well as recognizing that older adult centers play a role in combating hunger. We ask that DIFTA and the Department for Health and Mental Hygiene should work together to assess and update the older adult capacity requirements. More information will be provided in our written testimony, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you, Brianna. I will now call on Jeremy Kaplan, followed by Josh Lee. Jeremy?
Time starts now.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Jeremy Kaplan. My sincere condolences to Chair Millie, Chair Hudson. It's great to meet you. I look forward to having all of you over at our center at some point. I am the Executive Director of Encore Community Services. Encore is the lead home-delivered meals provider for the West Side of Manhattan. We deliver about 10,000 meals a week. In Manhattan, we are also the lead recovery meals provider for the Bronx, Brooklyn, and Staten Island, where with our partners, DIFTA and Green Top Farms, we're responsible for delivering about 42,000 meals a week. I want to commend the Commissioner and the Department for the Aging for its implementation of the recovery meals program. The process of transitioning people from get food to recovery not only happened fast, it involved a great deal of authentic collaboration with many partners. We have a problem, though, and it's not just about what we're going to do with recovery meals post-June 30. Even before the pandemic, one in four older adults living at home were nutritionally at risk. I have full faith that DIFTA will assess every individual receiving recovery meals, and when they do, we will find that a majority will require accessing food in one way or another. And the city does not have a financial plan to support that need. Encore started with 7,200 people in the recovery meals program, and so far, of those who have been unenrolled, about 30% have been transitioned to traditional home-delivered meals. Just follow that through, and that's 3,420 for the recovery meal program alone, not to mention the thousands of others not yet being reached. The Department for the Aging remains one of the most chronically underfunded agencies, receiving less than half of 1% of the city budget. If a budget is a reflection of priorities, this city does not show that it prioritizes older adults. But as I said, the issue goes way beyond just what we're going to do with recovery meals. There's so much more need. There are so many older New Yorkers aging in the shadows whom we are not yet reaching. I often deliver meals to homebound seniors on the West Side without fail. Every time neighbors on my meal route look out their door when I'm handing meals to one person, and they say, "What about me? I need food too." And probably the most crucial issue here, I urge the committee to address the issue of how we're paying nonprofit essential workers. A couple of months ago, I was delivering meals on a snowy day with Encore's lead driver, George. We got to a building in Chelsea. The buzzer was busted, which is pretty common. It's pretty common for our delivery staff to have a very hard time getting into buildings, especially night-night buildings, because buzzers and elevators often don't work. This time, a woman, maybe 90 years old, frail in body but strong in mind and determined, was waiting for George in the lobby of the building. George was astonished. "What are you doing down here?" he said. "I would have brought the food up to you." She said, "I knew the buzzer was broken, so I decided to wait downstairs because I really needed the food." George had to, thank you, George had to carry that woman, carry her, up four flights of stairs because there was no way she was going to make it back up on her own. We can barely pay our drivers, like George, and meal delivery staff, minimum wage. If George left Encore for better pay somewhere else so that he can better support himself and his family, it would take me months to fill that position, simply because the pay scale that the city offers to nonprofit essential employees is atrocious. It's government-sanctioned poverty. The city of New York must guarantee a minimum wage of $21 an hour for all essential human service workers and guarantee an annual cost-of-living increase on every single human service contract. And I know that this great council is in favor of that. So I urge City Hall to consider our plea. Thank you, council members, for your time today.
Thank you for your testimony. I will now call on Josh Lee.
Time starts now. Josh, you are unmuted, but we can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Nice, yeah? Okay, sorry. Hi, I'm Josh Lee with Green Top Farms. First of all, thank you to the Department of Aging for having this meeting and condolences to the chairs. We have been involved in emergency food, providing emergency food since the very beginning of DIFTA. We have worked with everyone from the USDA to the Department of Sanitation, to the Department of Health, and now the Department of Aging. With every single organization that we have worked with up to this point, there has been an end date for whatever project we were working on. And every single time, we have seen that the end dates, no decisions have been made until the very, very last minute. This causes a ton of problems, not just for providers, but especially for the older adults who are receiving this food. I remember one week in particular, and this was not with the city agency, this was with a federal agency. There was one week gap in services. And we had, I personally had hundreds of phone calls from food pantries around the city asking for food during that one week. They had people showing up in lines, and they simply had no food. I wish we lived in a world where these programs were not needed. But I think Crystal brought up a great point. I think the assessments they've done over at Isaac have been pretty on the mark. I would say 85% to 90% of the people in this program are in this program because they do not have anywhere else to go. They are not able to go to a food pantry and bring back food. And this is just from our experience, but during the pandemic up until now, we have provided approximately 20 million meals or meal equivalents to New York. I think that's probably the most of any non-government agency, and we've done it across a spectrum. I do want to commend a spectrum of agencies. I really want to commend DIFTA for giving us more than two weeks of security in planning something like this, starting in November and knowing that it was going through June, allowed us to work with the local farms that we work with and all of our food providers to assure that we could lock in costs for the entire program. With the exception of DIFTA, no one else has done that, and it has caused lots of problems, starting and stopping. I know my time is just about up, but I really urge the committee, whatever decision is made about the recovery meal program, and I have a feeling, like every other program, it probably will need to be extended. I think that the deadline for that decision should be May 31, not June 30, because if we wait until the last minute, people are inevitably going to go hungry. And that's just how it works in the food world. We can't turn, we can't turn a program like this on and off. At the drop of a hat, we need at least a month to ramp up or a month to ramp down. And I would say that probably goes for any food provider. Thank you so much for your time and consideration and all of the hard work you do. And I know that the issue of paying living wages is a huge one. I fully support that. I know everyone on this call is probably underpaid because of the nature of the work that we do. But thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Josh. And I'm now going to turn to Chair Millie. Do you have questions for any of the panelists?
Yes, I just, I've been hearing a lot about the wages. So the nonprofits, do you, UConn organization is still on? Encore?
Yes, Encore is still on.
Yes, how many, do you say, across the board, all the nonprofit employees make like $11 or $12 an hour? Or what, isn't it $15 an hour? You telling me, telling this body that they are not making that? Or you feel they should get an increase?
As far as I know, all nonprofit employees are making the minimum $15 an hour. What we're saying is that that is not a livable wage, and it's also not equitable to what their counterparts are making, even in city-funded departments in other places. And in the home-delivered meal program in particular, these folks are not just delivering meals. They are often the only human being that a senior is going to come into contact each day. They are, they are making sure that they are okay, they're not in distress, that there's not something going on in their, in their house when they look in the door. They're alerting case managers, and they need to get paid more than $15, $16 an hour, and they're leaving. And we can't hire new people because it's not just a meal delivery job, not that just a meal delivery job wouldn't work more in and of itself, right? So that's, that's the point I was trying to make.
Thank you. And I, I'm looking forward to looking into that because you have to keep good employees. And I have to say for myself, when we give out food, we have to sit down and talk to people first. You're not just giving out food. You got to look in people's eyes and let them know, if you need anything, we here for you. So I know exactly what you is requesting, and I will be taking it up with the body of city council in regards to at least $21,000 an hour would be appropriate. So you have me. I don't know if that's enough, but I'm giving you my word. I will be advocating for that because we need good people to stay where they have the passion because delivering food is not easy. You have to have a passion and a love for people to really minister to, in our vulnerable seniors, to just make them smile when they, when you come to the door with that box. So I thank you, everyone on this call, for doing a service to, to our seniors, that vulnerable population that we all know one day we will be seniors. And I pray that I have someone and organizations like these on this call to assist me and give me the food with a smile. So thank you. And I thank you, everyone, for the condolences. I really appreciate it. And thank you for this important hearing we had today. I'm glad we had. And I'm looking forward to many, many more. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Millie, and we need 50 other council members and a mayor to also back that as well.
Got you. Okay.
All right, thank you. We have now reached the end of the list of registered witnesses. At this time, if your name has not been called and you wish to testify, please raise your hand using the Zoom raise hand function. We see no hands raised. Chair Hudson and Millie, we have concluded public testimony for this hearing, and I will now turn it back to Chair Hudson for closing remarks.
Thank you so much, Crystal, and thank you to everyone who's testified here today so passionately. It really warms my heart to know that we're all in really good company in advocating for older adults. And, you know, as I said in my opening remarks, I got into this work after caring for my mother for eight years who had Alzheimer's disease. And I'm so humbled and honored to be, to have been appointed Chair of the Aging Committee because this work is personal to me, and I know it's personal to so many of you as well. And, you know, we want nothing more collectively, we want nothing more than to ensure that older adults in New York City have the resources and the programs that they need and that they don't go hungry, and that government is not failing them by failing you all and the organizations that you run and operate. And so, you know, I'm committed to working with each and every one of you to ensure that that doesn't happen. And I know it's, it's hard work, and it's not always easy. And we've got to work with, you know, all of our partners in government to get these things done. But I know in myself and also in Chair Millie, you have fierce advocates for you all and for our older New Yorkers. And so just thanks again to each of you for testifying today, for coming before us, and for advocating for your clients. Thank you again to the staff. Thank you to the sergeants. Thank you to my fellow committee members. And I appreciate everyone's time, and we look forward to coming together again to advocate for older adults. Thank you. Should I gavel out?
Yes, please.